The October ninth, two thousand nineteen meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee to Order, and welcome everyone. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance before discussing the topics listed on the agenda for the meeting. Anyone in attendance who does not wish to participate in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance should feel free to restrain from doing so. Participation in saying the pledge will always be valid. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, are there any citizens comments this evening? Are there any citizens besides us citizens? Okay, thank you. We'll go to the chair updates. I just have to just a reminder that we will not have a school committee meeting, a regular school committee meeting on November sixth. Most of the committee will be at the NASC, NASs conference. And as of today, as of now, we have not scheduled a makeup. There'll only be one November meeting on November twentieth. As we get into budget season, we may want to, we may need to, it's always a decision we make at that moment. So we don't have to plan that right now.
I think, yeah, just go back for one second, the citizens comments.
Yes.
And we received an email which from a citizen who was putting it in under citizens comments tonight.
Was that about policy?
Yes.
Yes, I'm going to address it with the policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I just wanted to be.
Yeah, someone was not able to be here for citizens comments. And I actually had to, I actually called to get clarification so I can bring that to light when we get to that portion. But thank you for bringing it up. And just another reminder, on December fourth, starting at four thirty, we will have a school committee legal issues workshop with our attorney, Mike Macarroll. So I think everybody's able to join us for that, and it should be very good. So now we will hear from our student representative. Thank you.
Can I be really, oh, excuse me, Paul, yes. You said the legal issues workshop is at what time?
Four thirty.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike said it is about hour and a half, and we will provide food.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Oh, Alita will, Alita will take care of that. Thanks for the to-do list.
So a pleasure to be here tonight. Ibi is, she's a very busy kid, and I think volleyball had another game tonight. So she is there, and I'm here. And as October's leaves fall, activity picks up in our district schools at the Hale Middle School. They're holding their purple pinky party to raise money to help eliminate polio. Florence Sawyer students went to the Kennedy Institute for the US Senate and took part in a debate involving the US Constitution. Several Luther Burbank musicians took part in honor band activities at Bridgewater State University on October third. And fifth graders from Mary Rollinson took part in nature's classroom in late September, when the temperatures were still comfortable. At the high school, this Saturday is band day at the high school, and eighth graders from across the district are invited to play with the band during the football game. The high school celebrated National Custodians Day by writing, by having students celebrate the day by writing thank you notes on a big poster in the cab and baking cookies for our custodian staff. And to celebrate the Halloween season, the Cheech and Press and the Creative Writing Club are joining forces to hold a horror short story contest, open to all aspiring writers. In sports, our women's volleyball team had their annual Pink Night and raised more than three hundred dollars for a variety of causes, including making pair cap, let me try that again, making care packages for kids at children's hospitals. Right now, our eight varsity fall teams are combined forty-six, twenty, and one. Both the volleyball and field hockey teams have already qualified for the postseason. And this Saturday at noon, the undefeated football team will host undefeated Waukesha.
Okay.
That'll be a good game.
It should be. That is the report for the night.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Paul?
I do love that she brings the other schools into, into this too, not just the high school. I think that's really a great.
And then it's more than sports.
Yes.
But, you know, we always want to know about the sports, but it's a big picture as well too. Thank you before.
Thanks, Paul.
Joining us this evening. Okay, I think we have superintendent's report.
Absolutely, thank you. So Dr. McGuire now take turns working on this, working through the items on this one. The first one is just a bit of an update on the construction on one seventeen. Definitely seems to be working, working along very well right now. The ongoing construction continues to move ahead smoothly. And to this point in time, our traffic flow through the community, albeit slower at times, has been moving along at a relatively normal pace. We want to offer special thanks to the town of Bolton, Don Loew, and Joe Litch for continuing to keep the school district well updated. As of now, we haven't had to make any dramatic changes to any of our busing, or, so it's, it's going way better than we had thought. So special thanks to the town of Bolton. Our meeting routines are now getting back into the regular cycle. And this is more, I think, for the newer members, because I think the seasoned members are well aware of this. But the administrative team has several different routes that they take. The district principals themselves meet once a month with Todd and I, and whoever else needs to be brought to that table. Sometimes it's our nurse leader, sometimes it's our director of PPS, it just depends on what it is. It's a much more intimate group, you tend to talk deeply about a lot of things. It's a fabulous meeting, and so they meet once a month. They also meet once a month with Dr. McGuire's Teaching and Learning Group, where they only talk really about curriculum instruction. So the one meeting is really a general meeting when they come to meet with you. It's really just about what's going on in the classroom, what's happening with curriculum across the district, and a real, and real efforts to make sure that there's good sense of calibration across the district, and of course, collaboration. As well, the principals then also meet individually. You'll see that our elementary principals will pair off, for example, and go off and just have topics for their time. And then the middle school principals will do the same. So they all tend to group several times throughout the course of the month. Our assistant principals have also been doing the same thing. They come in and they meet just once a month, just with the assistant principals generally. Emery Stojkovic joins them, that particular group. So they, they all kind of connect. And then, once a month as well, around this table, and that's what I was saying earlier, this, this table gets very long, and we all come in here and meet. And that's my favorite meeting of the month, because if you ever want to see, which Raina says, because I hear her say that all the time, if you ever want to know what's happening in this district from a broad scale, that's the meeting to attend. Because every single department, school, everything reports out, and it's just, it's a fabulous meeting. And an hour, well, to me, an hour and a half goes by very quickly, maybe not for them, but for me, it goes by very quickly. Sometimes two or two and a half hours. It's a great work to meet with. Additional meetings, and again, this is really more for the newer members. The Aspect Valley Collaborative is a group that we belong to, a collaborative that we belong to. And I sit on the executive board, so I attend to all of the meetings as well. As well, we have our Worcester County Superintendent's Round Table, which is a, quite a large group of superintendents from, of course, obviously Worcester County. And we're also bringing in this year for the first time, the assistant superintendents. So we're excited that, that that's just been added as a component to that group. And that group, again, it meets once a month, and it's, it's very, very different. I usually only have guest speakers come in, you know, it could be Secretary of Education. Very often, Tom Scott comes and talks to us. So it's generally at a much broader level, but it's a fascinating meeting to attend. And then MARS, which is the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, is, is an association that we haven't had a lot to do with, but we will pick that up a little bit more this year. They have different job-like meetings as well. So for example, sometimes Pat will attend, or our PPS director will attend, just depending on what it is. So those are all just key things that happen once a month, and I just kind of wanted to put it out there, just as an FYI, that's all. So the next item is the update on the, the oil tank that's really, should be in the Shova Regional High Schools, the district that's paying for it, or the, oh, sorry, excuse me.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to know, you joined the Worcester County, even so, we spread across two counties.
We are, Middlesex and Worcester, that's right.
And so why Worcester?
Because Lancaster is part of.
Because two to one?
No, 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 it's not a two to one, no, 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 it's not that at all, no, 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 not at all.
Is there, is there like a reason why that one is more beneficial, or?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Not at all, I, I think, no, not at all. I just don't think that Neshoba necessarily gone to the, to the other group. And yet, I go to the Middlesex DA's functions, you know, so, but I don't hear. So I think it's just probably more traditionally what's happened in the past, and that's probably how things are laid out. But that's a great question, you know, I never really thought about it, to be honest with you. A lot of times, the types of sessions that we have at Worcester County are similar across, to be honest with you. So, you know, Tom Scott would be speaking here, but he'll go and speak to other groups as well. So I'm willing to bet there is very little difference with that particular organization. The district attorney's office does a fabulous job in a lot of ways, especially when it comes around to safety and working with our police and fire folks. And so we tend to spend time over, over there with her. So, yeah, great question though. So NRSD oil tank, even though we're calling it the NRSD oil tank, and I was going to say that we're paying for it, we're really not. Our taxpayers, it are, but this is a tank at the high school. So the, the concrete has now been poured. They are fabricating the sleeves and all of the other pieces, like the conduit such, that are going to be attached to it. The electrical that we were responsible for has all been mapped out and completed now. So it's a case of just waiting for the tank to come in and put into place. In the meantime though, we do have a temporary tank that's in place and actually working right now and heating the building. So we're, we're so close, we're just waiting on the delivery now of that particular tank, and then we're good to go. So that is not good, it's been a pretty smooth project, so. I don't know if anyone has any questions on the oil tank at all.
Did they give you a timetable at this point?
No, not really, I, no, not really. I mean, it's not, but it's not something like we're waiting till January. We expect probably well before Thanksgiving, to be honest with you. It could even be as early as next week, so we've got this kind of window there.
Okay.
Moving on, Todd, moving on.
Turn to you. The teaching and learning. Superintendent Clenchey mentioned that the principals meet with me and my team once a month, and we met this morning. And all three of these items that are on this, this evening's report were discussed and met on today. So first of all, as we move our reading and writing workshop professional development into the middle school, we're working with Teaching Alliance, Teaching and Learning Alliance. We have a contract with them to work with them all year, and they're coming into our middle schools and working with our Teaching and Learning Department. But we also applied for a scholarship through them, and we were just, we just found out at the end of last week, we were awarded that scholarship. So that's going to result in a, in several more professional development sessions for our middle school teachers, as well as training for our middle school teachers, and it comes with more resources for them as well. So we're thrilled to have gotten that scholarship and working with them. They came in at the end of last year and did a pre-assessment in all of our middle schools and spent some time in our middle school ELA classrooms. And we've already had them in already once this fall for a pre-meeting before they start their work. So we're thrilled about that scholarship, the extra time, and the extra resources that they're going to give to our middle school teachers. The second part ties into more work around social emotional learning. Tomorrow, our entire team will spend its final day as part of our social emotional learning course with Research for Better Teaching in John Safier in Acton, Massachusetts. So we will be working on our implementation plans and finalizing those for strategies to implement in our classrooms. And that coincides with the work that we're doing with the S3 Academy that I've mentioned several times, as well as the work around the Excel Academy that we're working with this year in conjunction with this organization. And finally, we will host Second Annual Digital Information and Safety Night. This coming up on October sixteenth, from six to seven PM in the Florence Sawyer Cafeteria. This year, we're combining the digital information with the digital safety. All of our grades have really moved into the one-to-one initiatives, with the exception of our sixth graders. So the information night will be for all, all parents and all community members, but with a focus on our sixth grade parents, as those sixth graders are just getting their Chromebooks this year and will then be taking them home after the first trimester, where they're going to tie in our safety plan around digital learning and digital literacy with that night as well. And our IT specialist, Greg Newton and Gary Kozlovsky, are leading that charge with our Teaching and Learning Department. So that'll be on October sixteenth, and we're looking forward to that. And we've done a lot of press around that. We've reached out to the item, we've reached out to the independent, we've put it on our websites, and our principals have put that information in their weekly bulletins out to the community, so.
And the other thing I'd want to mention too is each of these, you'll see that they all tie in in some form or another to my goals. And so you'll see, you'll see a link when I go into my goals, and this is an example of the tie-ins.
Questions for Brooke, Todd? Todd, I have a question about the Digital Information and Safety Night, where it's essentially you're, you're looking, your target audience is grade six through twelve.
Yep, target audience is six through twelve.
Is there any sense that the issues that may occur in grade six are different than the issues with digital safety that may occur in grade eleven?
I mean, there can be. I mean, when we held, we held the Digital Safety Night at the end of last year, I would say the audience that, the biggest audience members we received were middle school parents. So I think that we were catering a little bit more to that, that audience, because the Chromebooks were newer and the, and the initiatives were newer. But I think that in terms of digital safety, the message six through twelve, I think is pretty consistent, especially within the district. And the, the presentation that we put together is very interactive and provides all parents with resources. And the main message too is really to send to them that they can work with us in keeping kids safe online.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite Raina to join us, and we're going to have an extended day update.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Raina.
There you go. I'm glad to be, very happy to be here. This is my second year with the district, and my second year as the coordinator of the program. I know some people are new, so if I say things that are not familiar, feel free to, to stop me. Excellent, here we go. I added to my title slide.
Oh, thank you.
I added to my title slide, "And friendships grow." So extended learning is where creativity and learning make me fun and friendships grow. I can say that with much more confidence this year, because I've seen friendships from last year and see how they have been blooming, and it's just, it's fun. I just came from the center school, and I have some new friends. And they all call me Miss Reindeer. Just what they call me, so I'm okay with that. Let's see, did I just, should I be using this one?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
Sorry, so we started?
So I know that since, we have some new school committee members, is that one? Yeah, there we go. I just wanted to review briefly our vision. It is a self-sustaining program whereby we want to support and extend our learning outside of the classroom with our kids, our students, and introduce to them a variety of diverse opportunities, both for academic and personal growth, most of which is really grounded in the SEL component, social emotional growth for our students. I did add for our commitment, last year I had the bullets that you see below the bowl, but I added to develop and support staff development around SEL. I think we took for granted that we were all embedded in that philosophy. And I think that organically and intuitively, our staff, and we have really great staff, do pay attention to where children are and meet them where they are. But I think we have a heightened awareness in the district now, because it's our district goal number one. And it's very dear to my heart. I come from a teaching background as well, and as an English teacher, I can tell you, they don't write if they don't have a relationship with you. So I find that to be really critical in our endeavors. How are we promoting and supporting SEL? A number of ways, and our audiences, I, I bullied them there. First of all, we're providing staff, or I'm providing staff with, obviously, the backup of the district, different tools. And tools come from dialogues for sure during our PD days and also in our staff meetings. I also was fortunate to find these fabulous workbooks. I'm not being paid commission or anything, but I feel worried. That's what our kids come to us with. I feel mad, they come to us with some of that, and I need to win. That's a big one in extended learning. So my staff and I purchased these workbooks, and we're working through them thematically. They come in very, very handy, I will tell you. It is also important to recognize our kiddos who are sometimes coming to us with long days, frustrations. The teachers don't always see it the way we do, because they've come from, you know, their, at school sometimes at eight in the morning or even earlier. So I've initiated a program called the Superstar Program, and our students will be getting these throughout the year for showing kindness, helping another student, you know, things to do with compassion and empathy, which is, I think, also critical for building a sense of self. I've been doing workshops with our kids called the Oops Workshop, celebrating oops. It has to do with recognizing when you've made a mistake, that it's okay, and we don't have to be ashamed of it. But how do we reconcile, how do we ask for forgiveness, how do we apologize? It came from a book I read, and the kids, it's been a lot of fun. It's amazing how many oops the kids like to tell you now, and that's okay. Yoga is also a component that I've integrated into our program. And recent, this year, I've started bringing in some drama workshops. And we know that drama increases expressive language skills as well as problem solving. And the students are doing some pretty cool things with role-playing. And we did a program with Hale Middle School students, well, the middle school students, the fourth and fifth graders, I should say, around anti-bullying and acting it out, and it's a safe place for them to do that. Parent outreach, I initiated a newsletter, which I'm putting out every two months. And you're welcome to take one, I'll just leave it here. There's a social emotional corner that I'm keeping current, so that I'm reading and bringing things to our families as to things that they may want to consider looking into. And it's, I think it's been well received at this point. I'm also bringing in an outside speaker, Donna Shay, who is a wonderful inspiration. She comes from the Peter Pan Center, and her real gift is helping families cope and understand the language of our children. Their behavior is how they communicate. And I'll tell you, I've just found her to be invaluable, so I'm bringing her back, and I'm thrilled with that. A quick snapshot of our student enrollment. On the left side is our two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen numbers. For those of you who aren't aware, we have three sites. The Florence Sawyer School here, the Emerson Wing, the Center School in Stowe, and then the Mary Rollinson School in Lancaster. We did combine this year, the fourth and fifth graders from Center had, they used to go to the Hale School, partly because of, well, I'm not even sure why, it was before my time. But I think partly because it was just a growing program, and the thought process was they needed to be separate. We reexamined that, and in talking with Ross, who's the principal, we decided it was better to integrate them. And it's working out quite well. It has resulted in more staff. So you're going to see some numbers that look slightly different. All in all, what you should recognize is our Florence Sawyer School program is the only program that went down slightly. If you look at the comparison from the AM program, which is a seven twenty-five to eight twenty-five, and our PM program is three to six, except for on early release days, it's twelve to six. Our Center School, however, did go up, and if you did the percentages, and I figured out how to do it, it's, we're about sixteen percent higher from last year. That's good, and it's challenging. So with more kids, we have more staff. We maintain a ratio of one to twelve, which is not easy to do, but we do it. We're blessed, because the Center School has a lovely environment by which we can really, you know, have the kids at the gym, have the kids in the media, the library, and a couple other rooms. And it's fun, I got to tell you, if you ever want to have a good time, just come over to the Center School, lots going on. Lancaster went up slightly, not too much. The numbers, although they're quite a bit higher, it's not because there are so many more students, as it is, students are going to our program more days of the week. And I think that's interesting, we can develop better relationships with them. I mean, I now know now maybe twenty percent of the kids' names, which is a lot, because we were about three hundred and thirty-four students. Um, Leah?
Can I jump in real quick, please? So I want to say, first of all, maybe you'll mention it later, I really appreciate you opening it up on half-days. I benefited from that.
Thank you.
From a personal perspective, and I think a lot of people would share that sentiment. I've been a part of the extended learning program for years, and I remember when it split and went to Hale. I think that the original thinking was that having fifth graders and kindergarteners share the same space is really problematic, because those kids are so developmentally different. So are you, or have you, and maybe this is true for all the schools, this question might apply. How are you managing to keep developmentally appropriate groupings?
It's a very good question. We actually kept that in mind when we looked at the floor plan. So my fourth, I say mine, our fourth and fifth graders are in a different area, which is close enough so that they can access cafeteria, the gym, and whatnot. We rotate the groups through different stations, so the fourth and fifth graders have their own space for a base, a home base. And that is true, that is not the case with the, because they have very few fourth and fifth graders. And at Lancaster and also at FSS, they don't have very many fourth or fifth graders. It's really more apparent at the Center School, where we have about twenty-four. So we do rotate them. And I think the other thing that is helpful to know is that the fourth and fifth graders, and we haven't done this yet, so we're sort of moving towards this, we're going to see how we do with maybe having the fourth and fifth graders do some small reading groups with the younger kids appropriately. So I think that there's a good balance there.
Thank you.
And I like the idea that we bring SEL beyond the classroom. I'm big on developing empathy, respect, and compassion with, for our students with community, so they get outside of, this is my own little world. We're doing that in a variety of ways. We work with the Rotary Club of Neshoba Valley, they're a wonderful partner. We brought in a bike safety program this year. Last year, we'll do it again this year, working with the firefighters, bringing awareness to our children, what it means to, you know, be proud of your community and to keep it safe. And I just formed, we just formed a relationship with the Stowe Garden Club. And they called me, and I was like really excited, because I had called them thinking, I won't hear back from them. And they said, we have three hundred and sixty bulbs that need to be planted, and they have to be planted. Like, I said, oh, when do they have to be planted? By October seventeenth. And I'm like, run it, run it, because we can literally bring small groups of children to walk down to the Randall Library, and they can see what they're doing with, with that. I think that's marvelous. In addition, we're going to be working with the, I put together a program with feedback from staff called the Onesie Program. I don't think I brought a flyer, but nonetheless, oh, here, I did bring a flyer. You can kind of see the babies. We, we talked with the kids, and, you know, at their age, they care about pets, dogs, and babies. That's what they care about, you know? So we're going to be donating onesies to the Clinton Hospital for the Babies, for the Infants, that the kids are going to be decorating them with fabric marker, and I have a little stencil thing. And we will be bringing it to the Clinton Hospital around Thanksgiving. I, I really think it's important that we help instill in our students the idea of volunteerism and giving back. It goes a long way, it really does, so I'm very happy about that, and they're excited. Let's see, my final slide, and I curtailed this presentation, there's always more, and, you know, feel free to ask me back or not, and just write me an email. Our enrichment programs for the fall, I try to bring it between three and four enrichment programs every season to change it up, to help kids ignite their enthusiasm, their curiosity. You just don't know what kid is going to want to do a downward facing dog in yoga. What kid's going to be like, oh, I can do, you know, do chess. It's really fascinating. So this fall, we have chess, drama, martial arts, tennis, and yoga. I've been teaching yoga because I can, and it's fun, and I like being with the kids. In the winter, I'm bringing in a Mag Arena, which is sort of a STEM-based problem-solving cool thing that the kids love. Dance, creative dance, a different STEM program, Art Ventures. Again, these are multi-week, we try to price them very reasonably for the families. And I also bring in things that are free for the family, like special performances. If you have a child or you hear them talk about Ouch. Ouch is a gentleman who I brought in, who is a master yoga trickster, but he's more than that. He absolutely knows how to connect to the kids, and he brings in what it's like to make mistakes, how do you learn? He, it's, it's a whole philosophy. The yoyo is just a little metaphor, and it's been a lot of fun. The kids want to have him, and he's going to do some workshops. And then I'm partnering with Mad Science and the Discovery Museum, bringing in a few other enrichment programs sprinkled throughout the year, again, to give all families an opportunity. And, you know, the kids just, it's so much fun to see how excited they get, I just love it. So I could go on, I'm sure that there are questions. I don't have a slide about February, April, AKA, or June camp, because I figure we have more time. But that is all I got.
We will invite you back.
Say again?
Will invite you back.
Thank you. Yeah, and so it's all good, you know, we, we really have a great group of kids. I should also applaud the high school students. I got to tell you, they're wonderful to work with. I really feel like we are helping them consider the possibility of education. I mean, we have kids, we have probably about seven, I usually have between two and three each site, and they're paid. They're paid, they're eleventh and twelfth graders. Questions?
This is great, thank you so much for coming and reporting on this. Are the programs full, is there a waitlist on any of the sites?
Yeah, we have about twelve, right now, I think it's up to thirteen families, most of whom are at Center. Center is just, it's the biggest site, the most families, and I think it's a few different factors. And we get back to them, and it's And we get back to them and as, as openings come, it's on a first-come, first-served. And quite frankly, and it's interesting, it doesn't matter, you know, we open up our registration May one, we say the deadline is July one, and we get a whole bunch that come on, you know, June thirtieth. And I write to the parents, we get a lot of families who are moving into our district, and I'm home and I speak to them and give them links, and I'll say, "Please don't wait, because I don't wanna disappoint anyone." But we really have to cap our Center School, our Center School is max.
In a related question, do you have a sense for, I'm not sure if you're even allowed to collect this information, but do you have a sense for the number of families that use extended learning for childcare purposes versus just enrichment purposes?
My survey doesn't ask that pointedly, and that's, that's an interesting sort of how do you get to that. I think that the data showed me, and I'm gonna look back at it, that there certainly is enough participation in the enrichment programs to tell me that that's a component, an important one. However, we get a lot of enrichment outside of what we bring in. I mean, at any given day, you can see kids doing just like, we were making ghosts today out of styrofoam balls, and the kids were, you know, just doing all sorts of fun things. I suspect it's, you know, there's probably a balance there. And I think it also depends on the, the family's philosophy. You know, well, how did they view, I think we have to wrap up, but I think that I'm gonna dig a little deeper, I can't really answer that disentively.
Other questions, Sabrina?
Okay. Chris Paul is a fellow English teacher and someone who has done a lot of work with social-emotional learning. I'm just, you know, so thankful that they have you there. Because obviously you understand social-emotional learning, and, and an after-school program is the place where you can do things like develop partnerships with, for example, the Stowe Garden Club. And it's a lot more difficult to do that and tie it to academics during the day, not that it's impossible, but it's just, it's just more difficult. So you're having that knowledge and being open to it, is such an advantage for all the children who are in it. I guess the one question I would have is, when you talked about the physical accommodations in the three places, you didn't say very much about here. And so do you think it's a detriment, you know, that, that what we have here at Emerson is not quite as conducive to some of the work?
You know, I ha, I don't witness that. I'm, I'm at the sites three times to four times a week, so I'm out a lot. And I, first of all, the numbers are very different, the, you know, and if it was, if it was such that we had a high percentage or a significant percentage of fourth, fifth graders, I would feel differently. I will tell you that organically, the kids sort of go to different places, like we have the Gogo pit. And we do break up the groups very intentionally when we're doing certain activities. And then we have our various tables with our stations, and they kind of go, and staff know who the kids are. So I really think that it's, it's a natural outgrowth. At Center School, we had to do it more deliberately because of the size. And at MRE, we don't have very many fourth and fifth graders either. We have a few, but not very many. And they do homework, I will tell you.
Mary, I'm just curious, have you seen the area where extended day is here in this building now?
Not for a long time.
See, I think you might, I, I-
I probably have an outdated, um, future.
Well, I think you probably do.
Downstairs, way-
Very different.
Very different, and, and so, so as long as there's a chance, yeah, let me just explain this really quickly. Your, exactly how you saw is how I saw it when I first came in. And it was, it was in the room that we now have all filing cabinets in, because there were bars on the windows, you know, the, the area that I'm talking about, right? And we also had like paint in that area and whatnot at that point in time when I first came in. So if, in the Emerson Wing, where the cafeteria gym is, there was an area off the, that used to be like the kitchen and such. And when, when, I remember walking in there, I think it was with Alida, now that I'm thinking back, and Pat, when I walked in there and I saw all the windows that were there, and the sunlight was pouring in, I thought, "This is a beautiful space." And so we, we had a vision, and, and in fact, that, that's where the freezers were, and that's where our files were. Right? And although, although walk-in freezers were there, and there were all the mice. And so we, we ripped, we ripped out the freezer. We ripped out the freezers, we had, somebody can't come in and disassemble everything, and we did a whole revamp of that area. And we created like a little reading corner, and it's just-
Some nooks.
Some nice little nooks and areas, and it's got natural washrooms in that area. And it was just, it was a perfect space to, to do what we did. And so i- if you weren't aware of that, I'd love for you to go and do a quick tour and see what's there now, as opposed to, you'll remember what was there before, and it's completely different.
But I just wondered that the numbers went down, whereas everywhere else, and so I was, I was surging a little bit.
Very, very slightly, and I've been a little digging, but you know, it's, well, they're constantly changing too, on any given week, because we allow add days, and also with the half-days. Sometimes a parent says, "Oh, my child came home and doesn't wanna come home, they wanna stay here," you know? And so that changes things too. Leah?
So I've heard that there are actually a good deal of like anecdotal evidence that kids are going to extended day, not because they have to, but because they wanna play with their friends.
Yes.
So I think that is at work. The other thing I just wanted to ask really quickly, and maybe you said this, and I just need clarity, do you offer the enrichments to non-extended learning kids?
We don't.
Okay.
Reason being is that it would be really, really tough to control the numbers. As I, and I do think that there's, I mean, we have, consider opening like chess. When parents don't have their student enrolled, their child enrolled, and then they're supposed to pick their child up, and then they don't, I guess there's been some issues around that, which you can appreciate, you know? If you have, instead of tw- twelve kids in a, in a, a club or whatever workshop, all of a sudden there's thirty, it's, it's difficult.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions?
I just wanna say thank you so much, Arina, you just do such an amazing job down there.
It's fun.
Well, and I think that because you love it, it, it just, it emanates from you. And I just, I love the range of activities that you're doing right now, and it, you're just running a super-successful program. We thank you so much.
Yeah, Raina, I just wanna say, sit down.
I just know that I'm on, yeah, okay.
It's okay.
We have a, a protocol that I run the meeting, Andy and Jen. I actually wrote it myself. No, I just wanted to say you have transformed this program. It is, and, and the addition of the SEL elements and the community engagement is just phenomenal, it's outstanding.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
And we appreciate what you have done for this program. And even the, the thoughtfulness about the spaces and the enrichment and the, the programs are wonderful. And I made a note to see if you could come back in January to talk to us about the camps for the vacations.
Sure, I'll be happy to.
Okay, that would be great.
You can come too. Leah?
I have another question, it's, it's financial in nature. You said that it was self-supporting, so has the program broken even with the tuition increases? Were you able to act on that?
Yes.
It has, okay.
Yeah, we're in a very good place, yeah. And we bring, put things back into the program, so it's, it's very fortunate. We have wonderful enrichments that we can bring in to help other families who perhaps can't afford the multi-week programs to enjoy that.
Do you anticipate tuition increases for next year? Or is it way too early to tell?
Yeah, I wouldn't say that it's too early to tell, tell necessarily, but I, you know, we will be, that will be a decision coming before this group. It, Raina would make the recommendation through Pat probably, and this'll come before you, probably November, December is when we start taking a look at that. And that's when Pat's already gone through and said, you know, is it financially sustainable? Is it taking care of itself, that kind of thing? And then she comes forward and ma, makes that decision, so. So you actually will make the decision based on the recommendation that they bring forward.
I still dig into the competition, that's my background, and I, they're, we're in a, we're very well-priced. And I keep looking, you know, because there are options. I mean, we, we're not, we're only showing Tal, but we're a pretty significant player in this, in this, you know, dig, I don't like to say digger, in the extended learning area.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Great job, Raina, thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite Doyce Speck. Talk to us about the social-emotional learning.
Pat, the high school.
And Paul's back.
Yes.
Could I digress back to student comment for a second?
Student comment?
Yeah, like all the way back to-
The student report?
Our student report.
Yes.
Paul, how is that person chosen, the student who reports to school committee?
I get to pick them. So it's, it's really, throughout the year, it's gonna be a rising senior. So junior year, I'm kind of looking around, you know, and, and seeing, I'll use Ivy as an example, and Colin for her. Kids who are engaged in the school on many different levels. Kids who make significant contributions to the culture, and they may not be the star athlete or something, but you see them playing music, you see them on a sports team, you see them writing for the Chieftain Press. So someone who, who brings a lot to the campus. And usually the, the student is an engaging kid, somebody you can strike up a conversation with on a number of topics, so.
Could students possibly apply for the position or intimate that they're interested in occupying the position? Or make it kind of like-
Yeah, they're, they, you know, I, I could consider that. I mean, there are plenty of opportunities for kids who wanna get involved on a number of different levels. I mean, this is, this is one student, and I think there's, I don't, I don't think it would work for had to have a rotating, you know, for one year to have three students doing it. I think there's something to be said for consistency.
Yep.
And, you know, another big piece of this is someone who does a lot at the school has pretty good executive functioning skills, so that they're reaching out to all the, all the other schools, getting information, putting that together in a timely report. So someone could apply, but, you know, that, like I said, there are a lot of opportunities for kids, and we're always trying to pull them into different things at school. So, and this is one, one student a year, and I think it's important that it's a senior as well. I think there's, I think that's, that's an important piece of it, so. But something to consider, it's something to consider.
Please excuse me, yes, this is not, if we wanna have this as an agenda item for discussion, I'm happy to put it on a future agenda, but we're sort of going off into a larger discussion.
Yeah.
So, and I'm happy to do that, if that's what folks want more information, and invite Paul back to talk about the process and ideas that members of the community have.
No, I just felt that since we had brought up this, and, and it was in response to something that Paul said, I don't think it needs another, um, time, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Jody?
So hi, I'm Jody Speck, Guidance Director at Neshova. And I called this Highlights of Social-Emotional Learning at the High School. I didn't really know what to title it, I think that the topic of social-emotional learning in a high school's too big for anyone's presentation. And I wanted to go over some things. I know, like Raina said, we have new school committee members, so I won't talk for too long, I know I'll cringe if I do. My first slide is, Alida?
The, the little, the, on the side.
The side, but, okay. So what this is, we are, this is a shout-out to the district. So part of crisis planning is helping the counselors in the district, social workers, guidance counselors, and eventualists. How do we handle a crisis if it happens? So in the moment, what are we doing, how are we doing assessment? And then long-term, how are we watching for warning signs, what are we doing? So this is professional training, the district is spending some good money to bring in a good, solid program. We've had one full day of training, and we have another full day of training yet to come. I wanna say thank you. It's great as we learn to do Alice and I'm doing Emma. So this is in response to really help train the people who are gonna be boots on the ground should anything happen that is really out of our wheelhouse, and, and it's been great. We have a small committee, the Culture and Climate, or the Climate-Culture Committee, that has been going for, I think we're into our third year now, and they've done a whole lot of work. And I'm not trying to capture all the work that they've done. But when we're looking at what's sort of currently going right now, they've done some work looking at sexual harassment policies in the district, and getting hours, working with our school committee, working in the school first, with the school committee to make sure that we were current, and that we were also addressing, should something like this happen student-to-student, not just the adult version of what's out there. And we're being mindful and thoughtful about that, and I believe that we're in the final stages.
Yeah, that was a policy last year, they came to, to speak to the Policy Subcommittee, because that hasn't come to the full school committee, that just came to the, the Policy Subcommittee. I believe, Paul, you came with the, the students to have that discussion. So that's, that hasn't come here for final, um, final-
Yeah, things take a while, and we know, and that's good, that, that we're, we're looking at what else is out there, what, where are the holes, and having different people help us look through that. One of the other things that they're in the midst of is looking at Title IX training, and making sure people who need to be trained are trained, and making sure that we have institutionalized with kind of a thoughtful schedule of how do those things need to be updated. Sometimes we need to have stuff formalized to make sure that we stick to a plan year in and year out. I've been there for twenty years, and so sometimes, like, ooh, when was the last time that happened? You know what I mean?
Excuse me, Jody, could you just briefly explain Title IX training in case someone's not familiar?
Title IX is, well, you're a Title IX person, but if, if anything, there's any type of sexual harassment that happens, we have a person who is the designated reporter. And there's laws and rules and things like that around Title IX and making sure. I think most of us think Title IX, we think college, ooh, they need to have women's sports as well as men's sports, right? But it, it incorporates more than just that.
Okay.
Okay. One of the pieces that this committee brought, found for us was there's an organization called Pathways for Change. And they deal specifically with sexual violence. And they will provide on-the-spot counseling if an incident happens. They will provide training, they do education with students, and we've looked at what they do in other high schools. One of the things we've definitely signed up for is to have them come in and train our high school guidance counselors and social workers. What is current out there, and to really forge a relationship with them. We have found a grant opportunity, and we're waiting sort of with bated breath, any day now we'll hear that it's gonna be open again. This year, we can, we can move forward with an evidence-based curriculum for training in the high school around dating violence. And really, that comes in, that, that dating violence spans relationships of any kind, and violence is a pretty big word, it's not just physical violence. And we've spent some time last year on a PD day with wellness, social workers, or guidance counselors, looking at the evidence-based curriculums out there, and did we see things that we would wanna pursue? We definitely did, and so we think that when the grant is announced, assuming that it is, we'll go for it, and then start to figure out how might this play. Pathways for Change would be a piece of that with us, they would be the outside organization that we would partner with in that. Continue the pilot of Mentors in Violence Prevention and Sophomore Phys Ed, and that I'm gonna talk about in another slide because it's so significant. And then, of course, we have the Vocal Survey that we have begun and will continue with, and that's really getting a lot of student voice feedback on these issues, okay?
Raina, could you elaborate on the Vocal Survey?
Sure, we, this past year was, we were the first school in the state to do, to have all four grades take part. It's traditionally a grade-ten survey. I don't know that the state plans on expanding it, I think that they saw how much work was involved in trying to, um, trying to kind of handle and manipulate that kind of data. So I'm not sure that, that they will expand it to all four grades. But it's largely a survey about, Vocal is an acronym for Views on Culture and Learning. So really, how do students feel when they're in school? How do, how do they feel, what are their attitudes toward their peers, towards administration, towards teachers, towards their learning? So it covers a broad range of topics.
And the, and the, do they give you the data?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, and so is that shared out with the entire administrative team?
This, this goes along with the MCAS, right?
Yes, traditionally it goes along with grades having MCAS.
Like, it would be happening in your building as well?
Yep.
In your, cause you're a high school teacher, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So-
So this is what they do when they're done with the MCAS?
Exactly.
And then the state gives that information back to the district?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. But I, I would, yeah, to the, to the school. Yeah, it doesn't come to, like, it doesn't come to my office.
If, if I could add, it's also, there is a Vocal Survey at elementary and middle levels as well. It's a different survey, but the same, same themes.
After the MCAS.
And then do you, and then you use that survey data to inform?
Yeah, we've used different parts of it, as a staff, we looked at it last year, we looked at it with, um, school council a bit, we looked at it with students, we invited students to, to a conversation about it.
We'll do that again on October 16th, one of our late start days. We're inviting students in for a PLT on, on Student Voice and Engagement. So it's, it's one survey, but I think if, if anything, we'll lift certain items and they can be conversation starters. Hey, why do you think this, these numbers look like this, you know? And it's a way to kind of get that conversation started.
This is brand new though, Leah. Like if, if you're thinking, why haven't I heard about this or whatever? It's because it's brand speaking new.
Yeah, I think any opportunity for student voice is incredibly important, especially at the secondary level.
I agree.
So the next piece that I looked at again in terms of things going on now, we, this is just a handful of our PLTs. I'd say there's two, maybe 15 PLTs going on at the high school. We have hacking student discipline, looking at culture of empathy and responsibility and restorative justice. Our assistant principals are part of this. We have some English teachers, some other classroom teachers. I think there's eight or nine people in there at this point. Guidance is leading a growth mindset and trauma-informed schools really looking at growth mindset and institutionalizing that in how we're working with kids. And trauma-informed decision-making, how the ACEs scores, the, the childhood trauma scores play into things and looking at how we might bring this education to the staff. Not that we necessarily become a trauma-informed school, but that how does, as guidance, part of our job is working with staff members and helping them to understand trauma and what that means, okay? The social workers are working on development of social, social skills through the lens of social emotional learning. And we have an English teacher leading a PLT on movement. And I think that that's a pretty interesting piece of social emotional learning and keeping all of those pieces. Who are we? How are we able to attend? How are we able to be creative and what does that mean? The physicality with the emotionality, do you know what I mean? And then the part of the outcome of the Climate and Culture Committee is this last one, Student Voice and Engagement. And we've got students signed up for that. Not enough, we're still looking to add.
Can you just, for those around the table, those at home that don't, don't have a lot of understanding about professional learning teams? Could you maybe explain that? One or both of you could maybe just explain what a PLT is? When it meets or what, what does it do? How's it created?
Several years ago, this concept of professional learning teams was instituted at the high schools. So there are currently six late start days at the high school that are dedicated to teachers working in these teams. They, in the past, they've done everything from created courses to aligned curriculum. What we really focused on this year was a number of different PLTs that would both look at learning through this SEO lens as well as relate to the school improvement plan. So that's a theme that, that is, it's expressed in many different ways, but those are the themes that are running through this year's PLTs. I think they're a wonderful opportunity for teacher leadership in the building, for teachers to really follow passion and interest. Also, high schools, as we all know, can come, you know, filled with silos where departments are separated. And this gives an opportunity for people who have, who are like-minded or have similar interests to spend some time working with one another in the morning. So it's been going on for a number of years. I can't say exactly how many. But, you know, we're continuing to go out again this year because largely because this committee has been so gracious in extending those, those late starts to the high school.
I think it's awesome that you've got 15 different groups going in.
Okay, don't quote me on that.
Well, nonetheless, even 10 to 15, it doesn't matter. That's, that's a lot, you know? And when you know that you're all looking at different things, but things that are tying into our goals and such, that's exciting. And I know last year several times folks would include me, you know, in, I mean, it might be a Google Doc that they were doing or whatever. And so I was able to see some of the work that was being done. And I think, I think it's all mapped out right now too, is it not, for the high school? I mean, I know, Jody, that you're bringing us this, but.
I have my agenda.
Yes, and, and so I think, I think that, you know, just FYI for our school committee members to know that it's, it's bigger than what you see. This is the snapshot right here. But a lot of really, really good work is being done over there right now with the PLTs.
And, and I know last year we presented at the end of the year. You know, our, our hope is that you'll have us back in the spring and then.
I was just going to mention that I made a note to have a report out and it would be good to see some of the ones related to social emotional learning and the, and the other ones. Because several years ago, the, the concern was that we saw the time in the calendar, but we didn't see results and we didn't hear about results. And I think I'm recalling when Kim Early and Linda, I'm thinking of her name, but you know who I mean.
Right, here.
Yeah. Came and, and just blew us away with the thing. And then we had a listing of all the different PLTs and their goals and their outcomes. So in the springtime, it'd be great to reflect on that and, and come back and do that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Next, I'd like to talk about Mentors and Violence Prevention. And this is, I don't know if anybody's heard of Jackson Katz. This is a pretty well-known, it's developed into really the leading violence prevention, prevention program. I think Scotland actually as a country has now adopted it. But what this looks at, it started with the bystander approach. It's, we're teaching it. We've looked at some other schools. Wayland is one of them who teach this as a gym class. And so we're piloting, we're in the second year of a pilot where we have a subset of our sophomores in a gym class that is focused on MVP. And we have a male and a female teacher. The kids will often divide by gender when appropriate to address topics first and then come back together. And we, these are many of the topics that are covered. And for, you know, the, this is curriculum that the kids adore that goes out of the classroom, that the teachers get emails later on about, well, I was thinking about this. It might be that they have a, they've been looking at male and female stereotypes in media. And the girls are looking at this and the boys are looking at this. And then they're talking about, well, what if and how come and this? And then maybe they switch and then maybe they come together and they find out, ooh, ew, no, do you know? That's not what that is. And a lot of what they're doing is perspective-taking, okay? And it's really a sense of, rather than the snap that we're, we're guilty of it as adults, but it's really prevailing amongst adolescents, right? Oh, I know that snap. Here's my decision. Here's what this is. Here's what this is without really being thoughtful of it. These conversations take things down to where kids could be very thoughtful of it. You know, does no mean no. And maybe the scenario is, you know, a college fraternity party and things start and there's a lot of drinking and then the next day, wait a second, I said no. Where did things go? Well, you know, and it's pretty scary. Some of our kids will, no means no most of the time, but not all of the time. And having the discussions where they're really, okay, let's stop and talk about what this means and what about in this scenario or in that scenario? And again, having these separated, the girls with the female teacher, the boys with the male teacher, and then coming back together and sharing perspectives. The kids report sort of really eye-opening changes in how they think about things. And what I see happening is, heaven forbid, our children are confronted with something going on. They've now thought things out in their heads. So rather than sitting there not knowing what to do except, should I video this on my phone? Like, which is the only thing people seem to think about these days. Now they have stepped through the thought process of who am I? What do I believe in? How do I step up? What do I do that is safe for me to do? Paul, come on, let's, hey, stop that. Do you know what I mean? How do I step in in a, in a way, whether it's something being said, something being done, something I heard about? It's just, I can't, if I had a dream, all of our kids would have Mentors and Violence Prevention for a semester. I think it's that important and I think it's that productive for them, okay?
I just wonder, so I think you just kind of answered my question, not all sophomores experiences. So do the kids select in or?
So we need to mix it up. We need to do a male-female mix. It needs to fit in schedules. It's a bear to schedule. Don't let me talk about that. And it's, it's, it's not a definitive look, but I do need to mix. I don't want to have all, if it happens to work against, say, an honors English class. I don't want to have all the honors kids. I want to have a mix of kids. In, again, in my dream, when it's all the students, it is a mix of kids. Things mix up.
So when you look at your schedule, you say, I think this phys ed class would suffice?
I wish it was that easy. It's really, it's.
But are the kids randomly?
Basically, they're randomly and then I'm making sure we have the, the gender balance and the, the section balance. And then I'm looking to make sure that we've got some perspective balance in there.
And parents don't mind or there's no kind of breach in that regard? For like, you know, if my child were to land in the class that is identified as the MVP?
I don't think we've had anybody, any, I don't think there's been.
No, and I, I, these themes, these topics is, and they're, let's face it, they, they are, it's the world that these kids are living in and the world we're living in and you can know about these things. They're covered in wellness classes anyway. It's really about the approach to them. Having two teachers and including, being able to separate by gender. But these are, these are not topics that are only covered in this class. So other sophomores who are in typical wellness classes are exposed to this.
Leah, was that your question?
I think so. I think if their mentor is typically kids like, I don't know if apply is the, is the word. They're identified as kids who could be, I mean, I know one of my children would be a great mentor and one of them would not.
So this isn't actually training to become a mentor. Mentors and Violence Prevention is the name of the program.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's, in some ways, it's an unfortunate name. It's not a name that, that I think gets to the true heart of it. And maybe they liked the acronym MVP. Maybe that's what, that was so, was so attractive about it.
But it also, part of the origins came around athletics. And so there was, again, when this first began, looking at training athletes in bystander approach.
Which they did in a lot of colleges and universities.
Yes, a lot of colleges and universities. I mean, it's really spread and there's just, there's, there's great evidence on this and.
Yeah, sounds.
Yeah, you know, hey, we'll come back and talk about it more and expand the program.
Really? A quick follow-up. I basically had the same question. But as difficult logistically as it might be, can you see a plan where you could get every sophomore into this program?
Well, can I take that one?
Yes.
Ideally, yes, and that's what we're, we're moving for in planning. But it, it, you know, there are some logistics and some decisions that'll have to be made over the course of this year, so.
And sort of as a vote yes, so this was a student email that went to the teachers, okay? I was wondering who discovered or decided to introduce this course to Nishoba. I love the idea of empowering men and women to stand up for themselves and others and the productivity of education of the subject. I mean, I won't read this to you, but it's just, this is a kid, just an unsolicited email who is just saying, this is so good, we're learning to talk to each other about these things. And the, if you have a chance to talk with either Mr. Connery, Pete Connery, or Beth McNamara, they will blow you away with talking about how these classes run and how fruitful and rich and amazing these kids are in their discussions and learning in these sessions.
I would encourage those who are interested to Google Jackson Katz, K-A-T-Z, and read about his background and the work he's been doing for 20 plus years.
He's got a TED Talk too.
Yeah, so just so that you, it gives, it'll give more context to what Jody is explaining.
Yeah.
And Elaine, I asked, I spoke to Pete today about, you know, this is our second year of piloting this, of putting together some information for, for this group. Looking at student responses, looking at skill development, those kinds of things. So he's going to do some research into, into, he's got a friend who's been involved with this for a number of years to look at what types of, what types of measurements can be used when you're talking about a program like this. And when I get that, I'll certainly share that with this group.
Thanks. So another piece that we're in our second day of is Challenge Day. This, this data comes from the Challenge, I don't know how to describe Challenge Day. Nobody really knows how to describe Challenge Day. So this isn't from us, but this is a sense of, you know, Challenge Day is about kids sharing with each other and connecting with each other. And it is again, a program that's been around for a number of years and has a tremendous amount of evidence behind it. I mean, when you talk about 91% of students feel more supportive of others, that's pretty moving. I mean, that's like holy mackerel. 80% of students feel more, more connected. We've got a stat up here, 40% reduction of negative student behavior. So that's pretty powerful stuff. Our feedback on our Challenge Day was awesome. Last year we did a hundred of the sophomores. This year we'll do the whole class. And the data on this, this is our data, the stuff in color, okay? And I didn't give you the whole, all the survey stuff. Nobody wants all the data. But you can see the blue and the red, you know, they feel more connected, more compassion and empathy for classmates. And we see that continuing to play out. Teachers this year talking about what they're seeing in their classroom being attributable to Challenge Day last year. Like holy mackerel, okay?
Jody, someone comes in and does this training with the students, correct?
Yes.
And who, what's the organization or who comes in?
Challenge Day.
Is that the name of the program, Challenge Day?
Yes, yes. And we have a number of staff with the students and then the professional presenters. Again, if I have a dream, this is something that we institutionalize and have, I, I always ask when I come. Every year for the kids because of the change that it makes. There's a variety of ways to make that happen.
And the 100 kids who participated initially, did they opt in or was it a choice?
They had an option to opt in. We said, you've been selected. We had to kind of randomly select.
Sure.
And I think a couple of kids, like less than a handful of kids opted out and then they were really regretful. They came up back, I can't believe I did that. I heard it was wonderful.
Yeah, okay.
So this year it's, it's, we're lucky to do the whole class.
Super.
And again, these are our student words come back from the survey. Challenge Day allowed me to see people for more than what they looked like. Let me actually feel who they were and put myself in their shoes. For a teenager to say that, holy cats, you know? That's something special. So I encourage you to read these pieces. Youth Mental Health First Aid, for those of you who are new, this is a program that is, was developed out of Australia. It's now really sweeping the US. It's in 16 different countries. We just hit 2 million adults have been mental health first aid trained. It's an eight-hour training course. We, when we discovered this, we made a proposal and we're supported in having one social worker and one guidance counselor go off and become youth mental health first aid trainers. And we're in the process of training all of the adults who work with our kids, grade six through 12, in youth mental health first aid. This is not to become a counselor. This is, huh, what do I see? Are those concerning signs? How do I approach this child, this, you know, sixth to 12th grader? And say, what's going on? How are you? How do I help discern if these are concerning signs or crisis signs? And then encouraging a student to get help or if it's indeed a crisis, getting the help. It is not asking an adult out there to become a counselor and it's emphasized in the program, that's not part of this. But we want our adults to have good radar about what might be a warning sign and then to give them the tools to approach a student to say, I ca, I see, I care, I want to get you some help, okay?
And Jody, before you leave that topic, now you did, also did something for the community in this area last year. Can you stick to that?
So on our next page, this is the flyer that has gone out for our January 11th training, okay? And within the first 24 hours, eight people had signed up, yay. They'll do, they'd like to do 20. They can do sort of plus minus on that. We so far have trained nearly 90 adults, okay? 24 teachers, six coaches, 12 of our instructional aides who are in the classroom with the kids, 14 out of the administrative level, seven in the central office, three counselors, because I'm not putting them at the front of the queue, 14 parents and seven of our nurses. So last year, the last one, we opened up to community members.
Yep.
And it was very well received there as well. Again, I have a dream that not only do we have. Again, I have a dream that not only do we have all of the adults in the school, but that we really, this becomes part of, part of our community ed that Nishoba provides to our parents, and that everybody can take this, and it, you know, it costs twenty dollars for the book. Um, it's an eight-hour training, finding the time is really the hardest piece. Um, Tanya Rich is asking her coaches to be trained, and they're starting to work their way into the cycle as well.
Super. But you know, Jody, when I think back to three years ago, this was just a, one of your dreams. You know, and you look at where we've come now, this, this is a feel-good moment, it really is. So, yeah, I, I'm really proud of the efforts that you've put in with this program. And, you know, I think back to those two, two teachers, well, it wasn't two teachers, but two individuals going up to New York to get that training, and coming back and bringing it back to us, I'm, I'm just really, really proud of the work that's been done.
So, questions?
There's a lot of material you covered tonight.
Like, you know, awful.
But it's, you know, with, one of the, and Brooke's gonna talk about her goals in just a minute. And, and we started the year talking about social and emotional learning, and we talked about the big umbrella that is. And so, we got from Reina, we saw how it is being actualized at the Extended Learning Program.
Yep.
And then at the high school, very different, but you can see the developmental appropriateness of it, and really empowering kids, because kids, especially your own kids, might not seem to be like thoughtful or connect the dots. But with it, when they're right, with the right other adults and have the right experiences, these are the things that really help them be more thoughtful, because they are caring. Sometimes they just, just don't know what to do, but it sounds like there are so many things in place that is gonna build that, that part of their, um, education for them. So thank you, thank you for your leadership, and getting this...
It's, it's a joy, I, I mean, it's Youth Mental Health First Aid, I'm thrilled to pieces.
Yep.
Challenge Day, MVP, you know what? When you get these kids talking about, it's awareness of perspect- and it's having them slow down and stop and really think, "What is my perspective? Is that my perspective? No, it's not really my perspective, this is my perspective." And then they own it, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Um, but we need the time to really have that happen.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, and they wanna be nice, do you know?
Yep, I do.
So, thank you, so I thank you guys.
Thank you so much for your leadership, thank you.
I think I work at an awesome school, and we're doing this thing.
We, we, thank you, thanks, Paul.
Good.
Appreciate it. Okay, um, our next item is the superintendent's goals. I know that the, um, personnel subcommittee has been working with, um, Brooke. I'm gonna turn it over to Elaine to give you a shot.
Uh, so Mike and I are currently the personnel subcommittee, um, so I'll just get you up to speed on what we have done to get to this point, and then Brooke will talk about the content. Um, we've had three meetings as personnel subcommittee. Uh, Brooke was already starting to put together a draft of her goals in the springtime, uh, in coordination with the district improvement plan. And so, in September, we met to review a first draft of her goals, and we gave her feedback, asked questions, went through revision, met a second time to discuss, um, it again, and add, um, how timely? And add some of the more structured, um, rubrics, and, there you go. And pieces that are straight from DESI. Um, and then the third time, we really just buttoned it up, um, and then we voted as a subcommittee to recommend the goals that you're gonna hear about tonight, um, for approval. So, uh, take it away, Brooke.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, and you're right, and I'm actually gonna break it down to the two, the two components. So we've got, um, a s- uh, some slides here, but this is really, uh, really brief synoptic. And so, I'm, we'll have this up here, but what I'd really prefer for you to do is take a look at the document that's sitting in front of you, because that's really where the meat of it is. Um, these are the key salient points. We, we did, um, Todd and I worked a little bit together on, on a lot of this as well, and in part because, a- as you're hearing about the social emotional learning, you're hearing about the instruction and curriculum, obviously, there's a clear tying in here with the work that Teaching and Learning is doing and supporting, and the work that they're doing with the principals. So to us, it made a lot of sense that we look at this from, uh, particularly the first, uh, the first goal, from a broader perspective. So, the, I, I'm gonna highlight a couple of salient points, and then I would love to, to open it up for discussion. So the first goal is a district improvement goal. Now, as, um, Kathy, I know that you know, and Elaine, you would know, and certainly if you're in education, you know that there are basically, uh, a couple of key areas that you have to create it with the new educator, um, evaluation process. And the first is the district improvement goal, right? So there's district improvement goals, professional goals, and student goals, right? So the first one falls under that district improvement goal, and that's where we're looking at the social emotional learning. Now, you're, you're hearing this, and it was kinda, how do you take this and really, 'cause you hear all of this, how do you snapshot that into like just a goal, right? So we, i- if we take a look at the goal, the goal is reaching every, every learner where he or she is at by tapping into the personalized social emotional learning of each and every student in the Nishoba Regional School District. This is not something that can be like one and done, and, and you've just got, you know, one professional development, and the teacher's gonna go back and do it, and you, it's, that's not what this first goal is. This is really more, and we had some of this discussion around the table, this is more philosophical, as you're trying to reach deeper into your classrooms in different ways than you have before. And we had said all, all the way along, and this came up in our district improvement plan, that what we're really looking at is really trying to ensure that our teachers, our administrators are comfortable, they feel the confidence, they feel well, uh, developed in terms of this. And so that, hopefully by next year, we see more of it pushed into the classroom with a strong level of confidence and knowledge, uh, from our educators. So, and again, keep in mind that the whole point here, and, and I feel, and I said this to, to both Elaine and Mike, the fact, Kathy, I know, you know how I feel about this too, that we are finally moving into year four, where all of this is tying in with our district improvement plan, our school improvement plans, our educators' uh, uh, goals, the superintendent's goals, to finally be here. It's taken us so long to get here, but it is a good feeling that we're here now. So, you'll see, my goals are definitely reflective of the district improvement goal, so there's a direct correlation. The goal objective, which is the next piece, and then I'm gonna ask you to, to look over to, um, outcomes. The goal objective, the Nishoba Regional School District will create and implement a social emotional learning plan, and of each, each of its five schools, K through eight. Now, you've heard Dr. McGuire talk a number of times about this, working with Research for Better Teaching. In fact, they've got another major session tomorrow. And you've heard us talk, um, when we were in the workshop, about the fact that our elementary, middle schools are building these plans. And the idea is that they implement these plans in this particular year, so this all ties in together. Um, so in conjunction with the Research for Better Teaching, the S3 that you've heard him talk about, Academy, the Rennie Center, Boston College, and that really came from, um, a grant that we received last year that we worked really hard to get, and that's how we were able to tap into that. And then the XSEL project, which is brand new to us this year. So this all comes through, um, that particular funnel. If you take a look, and we lay this out very differently this year, because we try to give more specificity in this particular set of goals than we have previously. Um, Kathy and I had worked on a template, um, before it got to your level, and said, what does, what does it make, how does it make sense here to lay this out in a really clear, concise fashion? But it will take me far too long to go through everything tonight, which is why, you know, I just wanna highlight a couple of things. I would, not tonight, but at some point in time, take a look at the action steps, that's on like the, the third page over, for this particular, um, uh, this particular goal, and over the page. And then the outcomes, and I just wanna speak to the outcomes for half a minute. Because this is kind of, uh, us standing back and saying, what, what are things that we know are going to be different from before this, uh, putting this into play to, to at the end of it? We know that we'll be looking at new tracking processes aligned with SEL trainings that'll be developed and implemented for monitoring students by guidance personnel, particularly in the area of attendance. In part, that's because that's also being mandated by the state right now. So it makes sense that this all ties back in with the work that we're doing. What, uh, for me, one of the key goals here is that staff will exhibit deeper understandings of SEL philosophies as evidenced by implemented educator, uh, strategies. As an example, uh, I was speaking with Principal Grady the other day, um, at Hale. Hale School had just had, um, a, a, a tremendous, um, PD activity. And he said to me, one of the greatest joys was he was walking through the hallways, and he was walking past a classroom teacher, whether they were, were they actually implementing the new things that they had just done the day before in the club. That's what you, that's the excitement, that's what you wanna see. So we're, that's where we're aiming with this. Uh, the communities will be a component of the SEL outreach and learning opportunities. We started last year, as you heard, what, you know, the mental health, and I, because that was a, I was hoping she would speak to that a little bit, a little bit larger. That was a risk take for us last year, saying, "Do we even think anybody will come and do this? Do we, like, is this something we really wanna do?" We went out on a limb, and she had twenty people sign up for that particular program. And, and that's, you know, and encapsulated in what you saw with her numbers, and she was going through the different people. But those type of outreach moments to the community, um, you, you heard Dr. McGuire talk tonight about, uh, the upcoming, um, uh, night for parents, uh, for the digital literacy, all that kind of thing, as it all ties in with this. So I think we've got about six programs that we're looking at this year to reach out to the community. Now, we did this last year, um, didn't have huge success, but some success. And enough success that I wasn't prepared to throw the baby with the bathwater, so to speak, out. I said, "You know what? I wanna go after it again, we're gonna try this one more time, and we'll see." Because some of the things that we saw when we reached out to our communities last year, like for the, the anxiety, for example, was really well attended, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the safety nights were really well attended. Um, you, I think you had a...
Ruth Potey was trying to...
Yeah, Ruth, uh, Ruth Potey was, uh, that was a dynamite evening.
Right.
So then, but then we had other nights where we had more people standing at the front than we had in the audience, you know? So we did, we experienced that too. Nonetheless, we're pushing forward, and we're gonna do it again this year, and see, and, and we had to stand back and say, "Did we just not advertise it enough? Did we, you know, was it something that people really didn't wanna hear about?" So, we continue to refine our processes as well from here and reflect. But we're excited, excited nonetheless to continue with this movement forward. Um, the next outcome, staff will learn, develop, and implement classroom and leadership SEL strategies. And an SEL plan, as you've heard us speak about a number of times now, unique to each elementary, middle school building, will be implemented, and we'll see where that goes. Um, we're not setting it up for, "Oh my gosh, that's gonna be changing the world," like, will this work? We think it will, but then we're gonna sit back and tweak it, did it meet the needs we were looking for it to meet? Did it not? What, uh, did other needs come out that we need to look at? So, it's kind of like a trial, like a, a pilot pro- uh, project for us, but we're very excited about it.
And like I mentioned at the last meeting, the S3 Academy has now introduced the standards that we're now measuring our plans against those standards, and, and self-assessing them. So that will be the, the barometer of how we assess our plan, so there'll be a data point.
And that's brand new, right.
To say, "This is working," or we need to, you know, shift gears in, in the second year.
Um, any, any questions on the first goal at all?
I think it's just real, I have two quick questions. Question one, is this electronically available?
It's in the meeting materials.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not, no, I don't think we put it in the meeting materials.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I think we just handed out the copies tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we, can we put it in the materials?
I think we can put it in the materials, I don't have a problem with that, yeah.
Um, okay, and then my second question is, I noticed that a lot is targeting elementary and middle. Is that because this stuff just isn't really out there for high school, or are we just trying to build it up?
Well, I think a little bit, well, you speak, uh, I'm gonna speak first, and then I'll go after...
First of all, the, the, that first S3 Academy grant was targeted towards elementary and middle schools. And then I think you're gonna see with the next goal, there's a focus on the high school, uh, uh, on its own. So, I think what you just saw from the high school around SEL is very different from what we're doing in the S3 Academies.
Oh.
But in, because the S3 Academy work is focused on our elementary and middle schools, which is why in the next goal, you'll see it's just focused on high school.
Got it.
And that was purposeful.
Okay, thank you.
I also think too, that there, exactly as you're saying, there's something to be said for building, building it up.
Mm-hmm.
And no different than our literacy program, because, you know, when I, I go to that, and that's the easiest, most tangible of all of the goals, is literacy, right? As you see it build up, build itself up now. So, I, I think that we view this in a similar manner.
Okay.
Um, professional practice goal, there's actually two professional practice goals, um, a- as we took a look at the work that, that we're doing. Um, and, and both are really linked to, to the high school. Um, but the first one i- is, and again, you, you'll see it up here, to develop a plan to create positive climate outcomes for any, uh, NRHS students and staff. I mean, to speak to the goal objective, um, we'll take a look at the action steps and the outcomes. The, the goal objective, Nishoba Regional High School will engage with John Doria and Teachers 21 to develop a plan to increase the level of positive personalized teaching and learning, as well as strategies to improve collaboration, cooperation, and positive climate outcomes among staff and students. Now, you heard, um, Jody Speck earlier talk about a, a, a climate and culture group that's already been in existence in the higher school, and they continue to do, um, do work that, that they see as important, um, at their level. This is a very different level, so th- this i- is not really, i- it's not collectively conjoined as such. Um, that group will continue to do its own work as it sees it as a, being important. This work is kind of separate from that, but it has a place to dovetail. So we're, we're really looking at here, uh, John Doria is, um, a leading expert in this kind of work. Um, I'm, I'm thrilled, I, I, I didn't think we could get him, to be honest with you, when I made the phone calls initially. Uh, he wasn't returning phone calls initially when we, when we called, and, you know, I think I've got a different way that we'll tack this. And we did, we went back to it again, and he returned the call, and, and he was fabulous to connect with, and I'm so excited about the fact that he is gonna be leading this work. Um, it was important to us, um, I, I think we had a lot of discussion around this, certainly Todd and I did, and it was important to us to bring somebody from the outside in to do this work, so that it was completely objective. And, um, a- and I just feel that there's a career chance for success, bringing somebody who sees him in this kind of work to facilitate this work. If you take a look over at the action steps, um, you'll see that there are planning sessions, and I would, uh, would want you to know that we have already started this work.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so we're not waiting for the first session, the first session has already happened, and it went very well, so we're pleased with that. Uh, we are focusing this year on the leadership team as such, uh, with the notion of that spilling over into, uh, and, and spidering out to the staff. But we felt that we needed that as a place to start. Um, you can take a look here, uh, I, I'm not going to read them all, uh, the various action steps and, um, the tie-ins that they have with the PD, and then I'd ask you to read over to the outcomes. So the leadership team you see is really, again, as I just said, the group that will receive professional development regarding challenging climate and cultural areas. And in part, this was, uh, this came as a result of, uh, some of the in-depth discussion that I had with John Doria. And, um, we felt that this would be a good place for us to start. The leadership, uh, it, what we're looking to gain here is an understanding of specific climate and cultural deficiencies, and how to address them. Opportunities will be explored regarding means of supporting positive school culture. And then finally, strategic planning will conclude as to the next steps forward. Not sure, I, I left this open, I know we had some discussion around the table, uh, Mike, uh, Elaine and I, as to what would next steps look like. I feel that those next steps need to be organic, I don't think that this is a to- a top-down. I think that the group needs to work, uh, collectively with a larger group, and from there decide, what are next steps? And so that's why we're not putting anything out there, there's no preconceived notion here of what this will look like. I think we need to be flexible and go with what the needs, um, are as they are identified.
Leah?
I just wanna say, um, how excited I am to hear about John Doria.
Me too.
Oh, because I, I've worked with him, um, we worked with him in Hudson on a number of projects. Um, and also, when, um, Social Emotional Learning for Massachusetts, he was one of the founding members, too. And so, when we would meet for meetings, we would go down to, to Newton, um, to Teachers 21, they moved further a- away. And, uh, when I first retired, I, I started working there as a consultant, but then I was asked to go to Andover, so I didn't work anymore with him. But to have John is just incredible and wonderful, and I'm so happy for us.
Yeah, thank you, I am too.
A quick question.
Uh, Leah?
Excuse me, so, um, I'm excited that the faculty will be included...
Mm-hmm, there'll be some faculty involvement, yes.
In that process to gauge their perspective... -in that process to gauge their perspective on culture and climate. Will you also be asking, bringing students in as stakeholders, maybe student leaders?
I think, I think at this point in time, I'm really, this is not a Brooke thing, and I wanna be really clear. I mean, it's my goal to, to work through this. But I, I'm really leaving it to them to decide what, and I haven't set any timelines on this. Because again, if you, and, and I know that everyone around the table has studied climate, culture, change. This is not gonna take a year. Like I, you know, by the end of next year, I'm not gonna be able to say, hey, we've changed the culture. We've changed, you know, like that, it just doesn't work like that. And if you want it to be sustainable, you really have to go with, be flexible and go with whatever is identified through the process. And, and let it have the time it needs to do whatever it needs to do. So there's no preconceived notion, I mean, and, and I said that even with, with John when we had the discussion. This is, I see this as the beginning, with no end right now in sight. It may take, I think it will take two to three years, quite frankly. That would be my, my ideal timeframe.
Any other questions on that?
No? Okay, thank you. The professional practice goal two, this is actually a high school as well. And this ties in with a couple of different things. And I think this will also tie in with professional practice goal number one in some ways. I think that there will be some natural dovetailing of that. I'm gonna speak a little bit, a little bit further on this. But forward thinking about the new high school space and learning environments for grades nine to twelve. So that's the general goal. And the goal objective, the faculty will look ahead towards creating a vision for what new learning space might look like to promote collaboration, creativity, and cooperation amongst students and staff moving forward. This, again, here's a timeline, this is expected to play, take place over the course of really the next two years. I'll, I'll just have you take a quick look at the action step and then we'll, we'll talk about the outcome. There's design training already happening with that staff. And so there's a natural tie-in with some of the work that they have, the leadership has already done. We attended some of the, of the training this summer with them and, and watched as they, they brought an outside organization in to do some of this thinking. So we had some preliminary discussion on that, but they felt that they weren't ready to move forward. We felt that this might be a really good opportunity to take that thinking and the training that they did and implement it into this particular work. So not from a broad scale, but a narrow, a narrower. And, and I think that there is a certain level of comfort in being able to do that, not implement it into their classrooms yet, but take that thinking with this particular work. The outcomes, and then I'll talk about how we see ourselves getting there. The NRHS faculty directly or through representation will have a voice to begin to create and build a vision of education in the next decade and beyond at the high school level for staff and students as it looks to envision a new or dramatically different building. This exploration process will organically create a document critical to the early stages of the building process. So I'm gonna speak a little bit and a little bit more depth on this. Through the process of working with MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, in the feasibility study time period that's there, there's, there's a couple of months there where they kind of come out and you take a look at what you feel your new building or the new project should finish with. What should that learning look like? And how does it get there with the new environment? Now, I'm not saying we're going to get a new building, I'm not suggesting that, but we could. And one of the things that I had learned through a number of presentations and sessions that I've been attending in the last two years is that people feel too pressed for time when you get there. And even this summer, I sat in a session where somebody said, we're happy with our new high school, but we didn't feel that we had done enough homework leading up to it. And we didn't get what we really wanted or needed. What we got was really the cookie cutter of what, you know, MSBA had said, here's what you can do and here's what you can do. And so that ownership wasn't there. So this is kind of taking that thinking down a different road. We know that we may or may not be queued up in December, we know that. But we know that at some point in time, some December, either this December or the next one, or the next one, we will, in all likelihood, be queued up. We also know that there's a time period there of about five years between the time you get queued up and the time you really actually hit the ground going, right? So whatever thinking can be done ahead of time is critical. So I called MSBA and I said, I'm thinking about this, I'm sitting in these sessions, I'm hearing this, I'm hearing that people feel pressed for time. And so one of the sessions that I was in talked about a gentleman who I know well, Dr. Jake Foster. Dr. Jake Foster was the director of STEM at the DESE when I worked there. And he was instrumental in the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics curriculum, the, the standards and the frameworks that went out. He also has a real avid interest and a strong working relationship with MSBA. For me, this was a natural. I thought, this is somebody I've, I've worked with, I know he knows his stuff. He understands curriculum and instruction on levels that we don't. And, and can see the tie-ins. And he has a beautiful tie-in with MSBA. So when I said to her, I'm thinking about reaching out to contact him to see if he will come and, and work with us. And she said, oh my gosh, that would just be amazing. So I did contact him and said, you know, I've got an idea here. We sat down, as I had mentioned to Elaine and Mike, before any of this happened, and he had, was telling me about the work that he'd been doing, and said, oh my gosh. I went home that night and thought, this is so perfect, it's like a perfect marriage. So he has come out now and we've had our first meeting and we've talked about this. Now we need to sit down the next week and start to map it out, what would this look like? And the notion is that at the end of this process, you literally have something that you hand over to MSBA and say, this is what we want, this is what we want it to look like. And then they go through and say, okay, here are the realities, here's a, you know, of, of whatever it is. But it's little things, like, for example, in some buildings, all of the department chairs wanna be close together. So you create a hub of that. We know that science needs to take on more of an experiential learning platform. What does that look like? We don't have that right now in our building, oh, we're not even close to that. What could that look like? So to bring somebody in that has been involved in every single standard and framework that has been pumped out by the DESE in the last eight years as our key person to help us think this through, to me is just an incredible gift. So that's kind of where we've landed on this. We're not saying that we're going to get a new building, but we are saying, at some point in time, we will. What is that going to look like? And we need to start envisioning for the next ten-year period, what, what does that look like for Neshoba? So that's that goal. Any questions on that? Sorry, this is taking so long, I know, I can't fit it in the ten minutes, I'm sorry.
This is important work, this is your evaluation.
That's, yeah.
We take this very seriously. But no, it's, it's important that, that you be able to, you know, a lot of time effort and thought goes into this. And this is, this is, these are Brooke's goals. But Brooke relies on her administrative team, the principals, this whole group to actualize these goals. So there's coordination, there's leadership. But having lived through two building projects, the more that you can front-load, the more you know. Because many times, an architectural firm will bring in their educational consultant and it's-
Yeah, they're, they're not, they don't do what we're looking at doing.
They're not current, let's just say they're not current. But anyway, no, I think, so don't, yeah.
The last one, last one's an easy goal, so.
We'll send a lead of a snack, we go to war.
Yes, go ahead, Leah.
I would say, I keep, I feel like I keep bringing the drum on, like, external voice. I would, I would hope that considering the taxpayers will be paying a lot of money for this building, which I one hundred and ten percent support, that we would ask maybe them what they want to see in their beautiful building.
Mm-hmm. I, I think that our goal right now, like, that's why you heard me say the two-year period, right? That's, in a perfect world, I'm, I'm okay if we don't get queued up this December. I, please don't slap my hands for that, but I mean, because I really realize how, especially sitting in so many sessions, how important it is to get as many voices to this table as we can. And so my goal right now is to start here and spread out. We, actually, I will tell you, we even had dialogue of, do we start out and come in? So this has been discussed at some length. And then we thought, you know what, if we don't go with a skeleton of what we think there should be first, then it's kind of like an open season today. And, and we didn't think that that would be very good, we didn't think that that was being thoughtful and fair to our communities. So we came back in, we, as I said, we have had this discussion, and said, no, let's start here and then push out. And, and so that, that's our intent. So I think you'll see us for this first year focused internally. And I think the next year you'll see us go out more. It's a great question though. Thank you. Any other questions on that goal? Final goal's really easy, so I won't take long at all. Because it's really just supporting the, the ongoing literacy initiative that we've had. This is our last, and you've heard all this before. So there's nothing really new in here, other than you know that we're going to work at the middle school level, that that's where our, our efforts are this year. We feel really good. Mary and I were talking the other day, I had no idea that she knew so much about the literacy component and the very people that we're bringing in, you're well aware of. And I feel like we've got amazing people working, you know, to support our teachers right now. So very high caliber, so I'm very, very comfortable with that. So I'll just quickly read through the goal and objective. As part of our five-year reading and writing and literacy focus plan, the reading and writing workshop model and professional development will continue in grades K to five and now move into grades six to eight to provide a K to eight vertical consistency and alignment in the reading and writing workshop model for all Neshoba students. The goal objective, as part of our five-year early literacy plan, all students in K to five will have been educated in the reading and writing workshop model. The literacy initiative now will move into the middle school to continue the same consistent focus for students. I'll quickly go over to the action steps and the outcomes. The action steps, again, are very similar to what we've been doing in the past with the focus on bringing the same players to the table to continue that nice collaboration and calibration of work that's being done at the elementary into the middle school level. Outcomes, NRSD students in all communities will have an equitable approach to reading and writing at the elementary and middle school grade levels. Professional development as a continuum to ongoing grades K, one to five efforts will begin in earnest at the grade six to eight level with that age-appropriate shift. Staff at the middle school level will begin to implement successful common strategies district-wide. And you know, in some ways, I think one of the, this is gonna sound so simple, and yet it really wasn't for us, just to get everybody to use the same language, the same terminology. Calibrate and say, what does a good essay look like? What does, how do we, how do, you know? All of that calibration, I think, has been hugely important and impactful to our staff and to our teachers. I'm thrilled that we're going into our final year. I feel really good about the work and the outcomes of this particular goal. So I'm happy to have this as our, our last goal.
Excuse me.
All right, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Leah.
I just wanted to add that for the teachers in six through eight, it looks slightly different. It looks, you know, developmentally appropriate. But the benefit is, they have these students from K through five who have been immersed, who know, read this workshop, write this workshop. And so they come in to the, the six through eight teachers and already understand that, no, no, it would probably be slightly different. But when you think of what a benefit that is to have it be, you know, the continuity. You've got this whole resource of all the students, so.
Yeah, the middle school teachers are really making it their own and calling it literacy workshop. Because in the early grades, you know, we separated kind of reading and writing as two separate entities. But as they move into the middle grades now, those mesh, you know, reading and writing together. So they really wanted to call it literacy workshop, which, you know, certainly ties into the goal.
And I think the other thing, and I know that the school committee is aware of this, but I say this because this came up at the workshop, but I, I put this out to the community. I think bringing Kim Early on board with us too, who was a department chair at the high school, who's doing amazing work right now. She, yeah, we're just thrilled and she has such passion for this work. And, and she was already doing some work previously with our middle school teachers anyway. So now to have this, as you say, you know, from the bottom up, and now we've got the top-down coming to support this. And she's so aware of this, to take this now to the high school, you can just see in the next three to five years where this is gonna be. It's exciting work. And she's just fitting in beautifully in the part-time position that she's doing right now with us. So she's remaining again for our public, she's remaining at the high school as a part-time, in a part-time position as a department chair, but she's coming here and working on this work here with our teaching and learning unit. And, and the other part-time, she's just done amazing work, so we're thrilled with that.
So do you wanna speak to the, the part of the superintendent's annual plan? Are the goals, but also the selection of certain rubric items? So would you speak to that, please?
And I'm just gonna really speak quickly, because this really just ties in. This is from the state level, and this is the brand new one that they are piloting this year. And I said to Kathy when she and I talked earlier in the summer, as soon as I saw it, I said, this makes so much more sense for superintendent's than the old one did. So I'm thrilled to be able to tap into this one. And if you take a look at, for example, the standard one, and again, I'm not gonna go into any detail because you've already seen these before, so I don't feel that I need to do that. But from the standard one, I chose curriculum and instruction for obvious reasons. If you take a look over the far-left-hand column, because that's our work, whether it's the social emotional learning, whether it's literacy, there's a real focus on our curriculum instruction. The second page, management and operations. I think, I felt that the environment ties in on a number of levels, whether it's the high school that we're, we're working on, whether it's the climate and culture, whether it's the SEL. I felt that all got tied in with the environment. The fiscal systems, that, this is just, it goes back to our work. This is, this doesn't have really anything to do, other than our work that we've been working on as a result of the forensic audit. So this is kind of a standalone thing over here, it's really not tied into the annual plan. But it's a nod to the ongoing work that we're doing to make sure that we are fiscally prudent, that we are abiding by what we said we would do as a result of the forensic audit and the continual growth in our offices with regards to fiscal, the fiscal systems. So that's why that's there. The next one, the family and community engagement, again, this just makes sense. The notion of the engagement, I spoke to, of that earlier with the social emotional and the fact that we're going out and doing some additional sessions this year with our communities. The sharing of responsibility with our community, that ties in with the work that you brought up. I, I think that that ties with social emotional, that's gonna tie in with our high school work. I, so I think that there's a lot of great shared responsibility opportunities. The last one is the professional culture, and that's communications. That's, that's, that ties in on a couple of different levels. That ties in again with the SEL, ties in with the, the two professional practice schools. But it, it also goes back and is a nod to the work that we started last year with the communication plan. And so to me, it seemed a natural tie-in that that stays in place there, so that's, that's it. And that's everything. And I'm sorry that it took so long tonight, I tried so hard to make it short. I'm so sorry.
It's, it's very rich and, and the implications are just incredible for our district. And you're right, three years ago, four years ago, we were getting mice out of the refrigerators so they didn't eat the sped records. So we've come a long way.
We've come a long way, yeah.
So any questions for Brooke? Can we have a motion?
All right. I move, I move to accept the 2019-2020 superintendent goals as presented.
Can you have a second, please? Second? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Thank you. So in January, Brooke will do a mid-year review. And it's just something that she presents orally. And then in beginning of April, end of March, beginning of April, we will have a evaluation workshop to in-service folks on writing the superintendent's evaluation. The final draft will be completed. um by me using all of your input uh the end of April, and we um have this all wrapped up before the school committee turns over again. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next order of business is the policy manual review. Um just to sort of um reiterate, this is work had been done by the previous policy subcommittee. Leah, I was trying to picture you and me going slugging through this from A, and it was like, forget it. So I, I'm so glad Susan and her committee um did all of this work. And so it's left for us to um to approve these final sections. And I sent out uh sections I, D, and C. And um what I did was, I wanted folks to see the process. So I, this is sort of your, your guide to the changes. But then I wanted you to see what they had deleted and everything, and if that was a confuser for folks, I apologize. But I wanted people to see the, the um, the, the process that they went through. What we are going to be looking at and um talking about approving are the, the clean copies for school committee review, and those were put together by Dorothy, Professor from MASC, based on the work of the committee. So what I would like to do is to, starting with section I, um hear from folks if there are any that they want to speak to. We're not gonna go through each one individually. I only wanna hear um about um ones that people had questions about or wanted to make any comments about.
May I make just a general comment?
Yes.
Thank you for doing this. It was enough of a challenge to do this,
Yeah.
to be able to look and to, and so without this.
Well, I didn't do this. It was just my, this was su, this was the work of the committee. I'll just take your credit for it now.
But you, but it is, it was, it was a help, and it, it, it was
It's the roadmap.
intensive, even with this.
Yes, yes.
So, anyway, so do you do to Susan?
Appreciate, yeah.
All right, that's all.
So, thank you. Okay, so uh section I. I noticed that you have notes.
I, I have notes. They're, they're all actually very fierce.
That's okay. You go, let's go through.
So, just for planning out.
Are they in order?
Um, yes.
Okay, so let's, tell me what your first one is.
Okay, so I had a question about the, um, it's actually about I H A M dash R.
Wait a minute. I H A M dash.
Health education.
Yes, hang on. I A, it's health education, boom. So, yes, exemption procedure.
Yes, so it says that the um, a, a parent could exempt a student in advance, but the question was, how would they know it was coming?
Exemption, exemption, material, yeah. I, I think that, I don't know if this has to be reflected in policy, but I think there is a procedure. There are certain topics that trigger a um
No home.
No home.
Okay, because the next policy, I H B F, which is sort of similar in nature.
Wait a minute, I H B, what's the name of it?
Uh, I think it's about sexual education.
Okay. I H B F says.
Well, that's homebound instruction.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know, that's not very well.
I'm looking for sex, right?
Well, that's I H A M.
Sorry, I H A M A. I was wrong.
Wait, I H A M.
A, so I was reading that wrong.
I think I got it. Yes, I have it. Parental notification relatives to sex education, yes.
That one's very detailed about the procedure of how parents are notified, and then how they would exempt a student.
Yes.
So I was just curious why one was very detailed and one wasn't, because they seem to be very similar policies.
I don't know that I would give an answer for that. Uh, MASC generally uh drafts these, right? And they run these through their legal counsel and such. So by the time they come to us, they've already been pretty clearly vetted. So there must be some rationale. I don't know what the answer is in that.
Do we have, I, I call them trigger topics. Topics um that I recall having them in, in my schools related to, they could be sensitive topics. I had a, a, a family that wanted their, their children exempt from uh topics related to uh tobacco products. This is before vaping. Um so um do we know that we have that?
I don't know that I've heard the term trigger topic.
That's my term. So, like the sex education one, there's a letter that goes out that, that says that. But things like, sex is the big one, I think.
Just to avoid surprises, so that.
Could we, I don't mind putting that a hold on that.
No, we don't necessarily have to change the policy, because then I think it's more, it is more of a procedure.
But I was gonna say, I don't think that that's really your que, question, is it? Like, really, I think your question was just why the difference between these two. Is that really what it was?
I mean, yeah, because you know, um, it says that a parent needs to apply for an exemption in advance, but if they don't know about it in advance, their kid comes home and said, hey, they talked to me about, you know, alcohol today.
No, but generally, no, this, this goes out, the, the notification goes out before the, the topic is discussed.
Okay, then, then.
I think that's all you were looking for.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, typically with health education, I know that some schools, they send out a list of topics, depends on their time, or.
Okay, even the non-controversial ones?
They send, well, the, yeah, they send out the.
Pretty much everything at home for this.
Right, right.
At that age.
Anyway, okay, so are you, are you putting that? All right, next.
Uh, my only other question about section I
Yes.
was um a policy I H B G.
I H B G.
Which is about homeschooling.
Wait a minute, I H B G, why don't I?
You're, you're, yeah, you go, you go, there you go.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay.
And I was just curious as to the rationale of why we eliminated the last paragraph about the diploma.
Becau, oh, um, I know this one.
Okay.
Because that seems to be diverging from the mass policy.
Um, no, the, what, what isn't, what went unsaid, I think that, let me find it. Was it, is it homeschooling?
Yeah.
Let me find it. This was supposed to be easy, and now it's harder. Oh, Chris, Chris, I got it, I got it, I got it. Okay, so, let me see, um. So that's that one. So it's the next one. Nope, nope.
Are you, you're looking at the clean version still, right?
Yeah, I am. Did you look at the clean version?
Well, yes, but the, the part was a little bit.
Because we took it out. Yes, we did, because um in actuality, you can only get a high school diploma if you pass the MCAS. So in order to take the MCAS, you would have to be enrolled as a sophomore. So if you were homeschooled, that would prevent you from being enrolled as a sophomore and taking the MCAS. So that's why they took that out. That was a MASC thing.
Okay.
Okay? Any other things on I? I, yes, Mary.
So this is just a typo.
Oh, somebody will take it, but tell me what it is anyway. Which, which one?
Okay, but see, I don't have, um, because I can't see the, the screens on those little computers. But anyway, I G B Student Services Programs.
Wait a minute, I G.
Student Services Programs.
I G B, so, yes, yes, yes.
So in that, when I looked at it, there was a typo. It said, um, instead of personnel, it began with S, S E R S O.
Somebody goes through it.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, they have somebody that, that's why it takes two months from the time we turn this over. They do every single one and check them.
That's funny, wow.
Oh.
That's really.
Wow.
All right, so, um, the beginning um of the meeting, we did get a, um, an email today, and someone was not available to come for public comment. Um, but I did, um, I, I, I went through the letter and I clicked on the links and it, it, it came up as the whole document, not the link specific to what um this parent wanted to discuss. So most of the concerns had to do with um her looking at the edited versions, the ones with the red, and so she didn't think to look at the, the final one. So we had a discussion about that. And the only thing that remained was in I H B, paragraph five, in I H B, is special instructional programs and accommodations. Um, I think that was the one. So let me go here. There's a statement that says, parents will be informed and conferred with whenever a child is referred for evaluation. Um, and the comment was to suggest adding or responded to within state mandate guidelines when a request for evaluation is made uh by the parents. Now again, this is an MASC um um policy that we adopted. Um, and there are references made to the um uh, the, 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 the law that that is based on. I think the concern was um the um the idea, the implication is, is not clear that, that parents have made the request, the referral. So I think they're differentiating. It says whenever a child is referred, it's not clear who's referring. And this um suggestion wants to be clear that parents can make a request for evaluation.
I really have concerns when we start adding things separate from what MASC already has
Yeah.
in the, in the book, because MASC runs these through legal counsel. And as soon as we, we do something like this, then we take on the liability. Because we're putting the words there as Neshoba Regional School District.
Mm-hmm.
And we're, we're not following what they're suggesting. And it makes me incredibly concerned to add additional verbiage outside of M A S, what, what our MASC parent organization does.
The other thing that, that I thought about is that um, these are our, these are our policies, and we had a conversation above the difference between policy and, and procedure. And when there is a, a referral for um special education evaluation, no matter who makes it, if the, if it's suggested by um a teacher or if a parent makes it, um, there is a, the documents that go out, which is the parent's rights. And this is all in there. So this can be assumed as part of procedure. I just bring it up, I just wanted to share it um as part of that. Okay.
I, I would agree. I think, I think it's much more procedure than it is policy.
Okay. Is there anything else about section I that anybody would like to bring up? Yes.
So just continuing on with the parents' concern, um, the remark was that um school personnel should not be in disagreement of the diagnosis.
No, no, this was, we went through that. We went through that. That's process. That was eliminated.
She's right with that.
No, no, no. What she was looking at, that's been edited out. That was in the edited version that was crossed out.
Thank you.
So that's what, that's why I was confused. So that's why I called and we had a conversation. This, after we went through the um, again, we had a conversation about policy versus procedure. And this is what was left that I thought I would share, um, because it didn't seem to, to be under procedure. But it is in the parent's bill of rights that people get when they refer, yes.
And then the whole piece about, she mentioned several times how we don't have a special education director. Does that matter?
This is a global that, no, we do have a special education director, but it's part of the responsibility of the Director of Pupil Services, Personnel and Pupil Services, PPS. So I actually uh mentioned to Dorothy, because I see that sometimes it's PPS director, sometimes it's sped director. Um, so that's a, a global edit that we can make in the final document.
Okay, great.
Okay, so that'll be one of my recommendations. Yes.
I was just gonna say, generally, um, specifically in the financial section, there was some terminology like that too, where sometimes they used you know, district treasurer, some stuff, they used like regional something, or other, but the terminology was a little off.
That's a, yeah, we have to make, and, and there were a lot that they caught, but we'll go back and we'll, we'll look at that again. Okay, if there are no substantive changes or objections, um, we can, yes.
I just wanted a comment. Just thank you for calling this parent and, and working through these with, with her, because
Oh, sure.
obviously, um, she would have liked to have been here and took the time to do this.
Yes.
So I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, I did tell her I was, I, I, I felt better doing with it, this, going through this process over the phone with her than doing it on television. Because it did take, because, oh, she's got little tiny kids, and we're on our computers, and the kids wanted her, and my husband wanted his dinner, and it was just a mess. So, but it was.
But thank you. We, how even more so, thank you.
Okay, so um if we're okay with this, I, I mean, typically you have three readings, but uh, we, I was told that it's okay. If we're good with it the way it is, we can waive the third reading and just make a motion to adopt it in, what do they call it?
Form.
In form, yeah. And then um we're done with this section. And how do people feel about that?
I'm fine with that.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
So, what, what you said, we'll, we'll adopt this in form.
Okay, we have the motion.
I'll make a motion, and then we, you'll have the motion. Oh, you make it. Oh, you have the.
Well, Alita just writes them down.
Well, whenever.
All right, I, I'll move to accept in form the school committee policy manual, section I as presented.
Second, I'll sit.
Oh, you.
We've got two more sections, Mary. You're gonna get a second. Okay, all those in favor? Very good. Thank you. So if we could move to section D, let me move to section D. Um. Okay, section I, section D. Okay, are there any um comments, questions for D?
Is there only one?
One what?
Policy, no?
What, what?
D, I don't have a huge.
Oh, where?
Oh, no. D's big.
Okay.
There's like three, two pages of D.
All right.
Do you have it, Mary? D.
I have some D.
Policy starts with D A and it ends with D N.
I think that only shows you what was changed, that chart.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
All right.
So even that, there's a whole, it's two pages, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any comments, questions, concerns? Yes?
Um, I just have two clarifying questions.
Okay.
Um, so the first one is, is policy D B, annual budgets.
Okay, D B, yeah.
Um, on the, let's see, one. One, two, three, four, in the fourth paragraph.
Yeah.
It says, the annual budget for each school operated by the district shall be developed with input from the school council.
Yes.
Does that actually mean the school council, or does that mean the school committee?
No.
School council can have input.
Okay.
That's part of their, their, their charge typically.
Just wasn't sure if they were talking about the school committee's um participation in the overall budget, or if that was something that they don't.
No, I think, I think it's just when the school councils talk about, for, a, a, and it's not what they sit down to do, uh, it's not that, right? But I think when they talk about goals, or they, they look at the things that are priorities, I think that that's trying to make sure the school council has a voice.
Okay.
And what's important at the local level for their, their particular school.
Okay. And that doesn't include personnel or anything like that?
No, 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 no.
It's their chart of accounts typically, and they can see the way the money is distributed. And it's good for, for them to see it, because people don't typically see it for the individuals.
But no, you're absolutely right. And it's really more about what, what, and it ties back to the school improvement plan, really, is what it does, right? What's important and, and um as they move forward, like the literacy is a perfect example of that, right?
Okay, um, yes.
So my last question is on policy D E D slash D F G.
Wait a minute, D E, oh my god, investment funds, that kind of tax here.
This is actually a question for Pat.
Investment of funds, hang on.
Give the letters one more time, Alita.
D E D. Where is that? Investment of funds, budget adoption.
I just scrolled down here myself.
Budget, fiscal, budget, legal, where, you see, investment types?
Investment responsibility?
No.
It, no, it's D, it's um investment of funds.
Yeah, I don't see that. Is that, was that in the, the final ones?
Yes.
Oh, wait, you know why? Because it says MASC does not have a policy. That's why you're not seeing it.
Oh.
Oh, right, but we are keeping the policy. It's not sa, it's not, we're not suggesting we eliminate it.
I don't think that there is a policy.
None, see, it says none. There's no policy.
There is no policy.
No, I mean, I mean, it exists. Are we suggesting we're eliminating it, or are we just keeping the one we currently?
I have none there. MASC does not have a policy.
So, so, so we, that, we should have, well, right.
I don't see in that. If we go back, I'd have to go back to the original one.
Markups in the total, it all marked alcohol policy? Isn't there a link?
Yeah.
No, it's not.
Oh, wait a minute, wait, 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 wait.
It's suggesting no changes, because we're just keeping the policy. It says MASC doesn't have a policy.
Hang on. So section D, let me go here. Okay, and so investment, what's the name of that? Investment types?
Investment of funds, that's the one before investment types.
One before, funding proposals. Wait a minute, let me go here. Get out of there. No. Yeah, that's okay, okay. Um, got it. Okay, so what do I want?
Go to the very next one.
D E D. D E D, investment of funds.
There's.
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
So Pat, have you looked at that?
She's like, I don't know what she's talking about.
Yeah.
And yeah, at some point, something like that.
District shall seek a high level of current income consistent with the following inv, investments. Let me see if there's a reference.
So my question.
Wait, wait, wait.
Because maybe it's more general that we don't need.
There's no, there's no legal references. Investor. There's no, there's no legal references. Investor responsibilities, N G L four four.
No, no, this appears to be, this appears to be a policy that Nishoba's just had.
I I'm wondering, again, because we're we're all new to this, you know, I'm wondering if we shouldn't look into this this one, Pat.
Okay.
Just to see what the history is on it. And maybe, um Kathy, you might wanna reach out to Dorothy Presser and see. But it looks like M A S C does not have a policy.
No, well, the policy in and of itself was a, I was a little surprised to see it. Uh but my question was, I wasn't sure if it referred to money that comes in for the annual budget that we just haven't spent yet.
Cause no, there's not even a date on it.
If it's for things like O P E D or special accounts, like revolving funds.
A minute.
But there's.
C F G. This is.
There's not a date though, and there's no M G F, no? That's not it? Go up, yeah, that's a second thought.
Well, there's only. The legal, yeah. No, no, there's no date. That's a different one.
There's no date?
Let me check on this. We can pull this one out.
I would put a hold on that right now. I'll take a later.
Okay.
Yeah, I gotta hold on it. Any, anything else?
Okay. Yeah.
Good thing to pick up though, Alia.
Thank you.
I would say, Kathy, I wonder if there are, we had a bunch of nuns.
Yes.
So might that be the case for all of the nuns we need to consider?
No. No. The nuns made, there was no change.
No changes to the policy.
No changes. This one is not in the, the nuns are still in the.
M A S C?
They match.
They're in our policy manual.
So this is the only one.
This is the only one, as it appears to be. But this has no, it has no, usually there's a reference, we have M A S C or a reference to Mass General Law.
Yep.
Um so let me just do some digging on this one and find out. Cause there's no real, that it's i- if none would indicate that we would keep the policy as it is, and then it says M A S C does not have a policy, so let me check with with Dorothy.
Makes me nervous to have a policy that M A S C does not have.
Makes me nervous to have no reference to the law.
There's.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and there's, there's some specifics in there about finance, about, you know, assuring the principal amount is safe from credit market risk. I'm like, that's very specific to me.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Pat, I'm gonna send this to you.
But in there, something that Mass hasn't.
Sure, that's okay.
Can I also just ask like an outlining question? So if you s, if you keep scrolling down, there's another document that says investment responsibility.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
That doesn't look like it has a heading and it has the same file name, file letters.
Yeah.
And it's not posted on here.
That does have a legal reference.
Yeah, so maybe that's the.
So I think that they're all combined.
Yeah, I think you may check.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So let me, let me, I will, let me, let's hold this one out.
Yeah.
Because it seems like everything else is okay. Is that correct? In D, any other questions or comments about D? So would the, could could we amend the motion to exclude D E D dash D F G?
Uh sure. Um I'll move to accept inform the school committee policy manual section D with the exclusion of policy D E D slash D F G.
And I will follow up on that. Um second?
Second.
Mary, second. Um all in favor? Opposed? Leah, do you go to vote?
I'm in favor.
Oh, thank you. Okay, that's good.
I'm moving very quickly.
Um, okay, so now we go to section C. Any note? Oh, let me get to section C. Hang on. So section C, got, 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 got. All right. Questions? Comments?
I think I caught one typo.
Okay, we'll see if the that, the gallant M A S C picks up on it.
Okay, yes, C H, the school committee employees. I think I mean school district employees.
Okay. Anything else?
Of course.
Yes.
Uh just a general question about C M, which is the very last one.
Mm-hmm.
The school district annual report.
Okay.
Um as I read through this, it sounded like, sort of like the district improvement plan, um except it talks a lot about financials. And so
Yeah, I think they're different.
And anyway.
So I was like, oh, maybe I'm thinking about this incorrectly. Um can you just explain the annual plan more?
No. Like if I'm reading it here, let me just. You know what? I don't think I have an answer. I'm gonna have to look into this because to be honest with you, I almost I almost feel like we do part of this through through our budget process. Like there's a piece of me that says we do part of this through our budget process, right?
Yeah.
And we read our book. And then you've got part of it over, like, I I guess what I'm saying is I could see us pulling this all together. But right now, we don't pull it all together. Ours, ours is kind of in pieces, like, I mean, exactly what we talked about tonight, tying it in with the district improvement plan. That also ties into the budget. Like to be honest with you, it's, I think it's all the pieces that come together.
Okay, yeah, I mean, piece by piece, I certainly think we have a lot of information, but
Yeah, but I don't think we've ever pulled it all together into one.
Like, there's a legal reference in there too, so I was like.
Yeah. Well, we'll check that legal reference because that that may just ascend.
I'm gonna hold this one too until you, you guys have a chance to look at it.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we're gonna hold C M, and the two that are on hold, the one from D, D E D, D F G,
I bet you that's what it is.
Um and C M will revisit um uh on the meeting on the twenty-third and see if we're.
Yeah, to be honest, it really sounds like the district improvement plan.
Okay, but I'll send it to you.
But it, but it, but there's, it's got the financial piece in it, so that's, yeah.
All right, any, any more questions or comments on section C? Okay, um can we have a motion exclusive of C M?
All right, I move to accept inform the school committee policy manual section C as presented with the exclusion of policy C M.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? This went so much better than I was imagining. Thank you so much. Thank you, okay. Um.
Kathy, can I have a process question?
Yes. Sure.
So just for the other members' knowledge, there are two that remain, right?
Yes, there are. Hang on one second. Um, yes, we have to, and we'll take them up at our next meeting. Um J and G will take up.
And then maybe also take up the.
G two, that's, so that's what, so um, so I will send out J and um G to folks um the week before the next meeting, and I'll send it out in the same format. The one to focus on, I mean, if you wanna see what's been edited, that's fine. Um but Dorothy calls those files um uh for school committee review, I call them the clean, clean copies. So that is what um they, the the policy subcommittee worked with her on. So those will go out the same format, and as soon as we get them all approved, that's when we can send them along to M A S C and Dorothy indicated it takes about two months to get them up and running, so.
It's exciting to know that we're, again, four years ago, you look now, this is great to have it at this level, ready to.
Oh, my God, I'm telling you. I, yeah, I mean.
So close.
I can't, I I remember looking at the policies the first time, and all those clicks, and then all those files, and then, you know, anyway.
It's a good feeling.
Yes, it is. Okay, great. All right, so um do we have a personnel report?
Uh well, we did meet. You guys know what we've been meeting on, the superintendent schools.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um the next thing we'll take up is the school committee manual, but we're probably gonna wait on it a bit because it was last revised in the spring, so give it a little.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, and things might come up in the budget process, whether the personnel, so we'll see.
Certainly, yeah.
Yep. Leah, do we have anything to report for policy?
Just what you just said, two more incoming.
Yeah, okay, very good. So correspondence, I just got this um this afternoon. Uh huh, look at, don't those signatures all look alike to you? Hmm. Anyway, um it is the, it's come to our attention that there are ongoing discussions whether to keep the name Chieftains as a school logo. For fifty-four years, um the alumni have fond memories of the legacies as a chieftain. To try to raise this identity, if many is distributing to us, there's a opposition to this, and so there's a list. I'm, we're not involved in any ongoing discussions, are we? I'm not aware.
No. I I have a feeling, I I don't know this because I I have no idea where this started. But I know that um we have gradually been changing the logo from the headdress to the N, uh but that started well before I even came here.
Right, right.
And we only had one last piece, I believe it's one last piece that that we had to do, and that was the front sign. And it was only a piece, I think, that was maybe two feet by two feet. It was a small piece on the front side. And this summer, they changed it and just to put the logo that we always have, which is the N, you know, uh emblem, and we did that.
Hmm.
And I'm not sure if that, because next thing I knew, there was.
This, this mentions Chieftains.
Yes, I, no, I I hear that.
Yeah.
But but what I would want you to know is that that apparently after that sign was, the the N had been put into place, and again, it was the last thing that we changed.
Mm-hmm.
There was a radio show um discussion on it. And but that was news to us. We we didn't, we heard about it that morning that that something had happened. And then when I saw this, I thought, somebody out there must think that something's happening that that maybe isn't happening.
Perhaps.
The only thing I can think of is that that was the only change we made. But right now, I mean, there is always ongoing
Yep.
discussion out there, scuttlebutt out there. So maybe there's some scuttlebutt out there happening right now that I'm not aware of.
Yeah. Yeah.
But at this table.
Yeah.
Or at this administration table right now, there is no discussion of this kind of thing happening.
Okay. Um there's a person I can respond to, let her know that it was received and we are not aware of any movement to do that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You know, I I will say though, from a positive lens, I didn't mind receiving that, to be honest with me.
Oh, I'm not upset, I'm just sharing.
Oh, no, no, no. No, I know that, you know, I I'm saying as a superintendent. As a superintendent, I appreciated the fact that
I had no idea.
that this came forward, that it it's important to somebody enough that they would take this upon themselves to do this.
Mm. Mm-hmm.
And then send it to us. I'm I'm very appreciative of receiving this. There is a discussion going on right now, but I really appreciate the fact that somebody took the time to do this.
Okay. Can I, can I have to have you clarify? That petition is people in support of the logo?
Leah?
Yes.
They want as a, the chi.
Not, no, no, it has nothing to do with the logo, it's the name.
No, no. It's the name.
The Chieftain, yeah.
Right. So they are, that petition is people supporting the name as is and as it is.
Keep the name Chieftains as the school's logo.
Right. And so um I am aware of a special interest group that has formed, that is, that is interested in changing.
Well, we are not.
The, the school department and the school committee is not.
Esteemed group. Yes, that's correct.
But I think that that is the root of that. Can you, can you just clarify very quickly, and maybe it's just like a guess at it, how many signatures are on the petition?
Perhaps. Well, I will look at the years of graduation, a lot of nineteen sixty-nine, um two thousand one, two thousand three, a lot of six, nineteen sixty-two. Nineteen sixty-eight, nineteen seventy.
But you're asking just for shared numbers.
Sixty-six, yeah, no, I don't, yeah, you can see.
Yeah. Thirty signatures? Okay.
So, yeah.
I appreciate that as well.
Yeah.
Um I also appreciate an open dialogue in the community if they see fit.
Right, but I, yeah, but I don't, we're not part of that yet, and we're not, no one has come to us to say, we're gonna change it.
Well, we we had, no, but we did have, and I'm sure that that's the same group, maybe two years ago or three years ago, we did have a a teacher come forward.
That wanted to change it.
That wanted to change it, and he brought some of the teachers with him that night. So that has come to the school committee.
Yeah.
So that, I'm sure that's probably the same group. I'm assuming that's the same group.
Maybe, it's the other side of the coin, yes.
So it's, it is the other side of the coin, because if if this discussion, if it does come to this table, so be it. But I would want you to know that there's going to be healthy discussion on both sides.
Oh, sure.
Everybody's passionate on either side, you know? Um and I think where we left it off, if memory serves me right, um because there wa, there was the penchant or some discussion about changing it in sta, in um the statute. And if that happened.
Oh, that, yes, this was a couple of years ago. There was a, yeah.
No, that's right. Then we said, if that happens, then perhaps we will need to do a revisit.
And it never happened.
But it did not happen.
Okay.
I will respond to it. It it hasn't happened, but there's, they still talk about it from time to time. It's still sort of in popular culture and tossed around at the state level.
No. Hmm.
I don't know how close to actually getting anything passed anyone is, but.
Mm. They need to focus on the education funding budget and table.
You have one thing at a time.
Yes, but exactly. So.
Okay, um we have the um a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Uh I'll move to approve the October ninth, twenty nineteen consent agenda, including the meeting minutes of September twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, and the warrants of October eleventh, twenty nineteen.
Can I have a second? Joe, you haven't done, you haven't seconded.
I'll second the motion.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, all those in favor? Super. Okay, um items to be considered for next and or future agendas. I have um just put on, maybe in January have um Rayna come back and let's find out about the vacation camps for extended learning, and then a high school P M Ts report out in the spring.
Mm-hmm.
Um I did have, I don't know if it's there now, um the calendar committee is going to start working in December. We need to understand how they're going to get feedback about the change in um uh the the P D days and the impact. Other things for the agenda, folks? upcoming agendas?
I have something for you, Kathy. I was actually surprised not, I don't know, maybe I'm just missing something, that kindergarten, the voting for the budget element.
Yes. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Is not on this agenda.
Right, well, Mike wasn't here, and he he would very much like to be here when that discussion happens.
So empty. And we're gonna, that'll be in November.
I was gonna say, yes.
We're gonna move it to November twentieth.
Thank you.
Okay, so everybody be here.
I think that's important information for the public too.
Yes.
Um, okay, so October twentieth.
I'm glad you brought that up because it actually was um on the, it was written in the newspaper that it would be tonight.
Mm-hmm.
And I felt badly when I saw that, and I knew that we had to take it off the agenda and move it to another a, another agenda because when it's put in the newspaper, it makes it awkward to change that agenda.
Mm-hmm.
But I think it's, you know, and I think, I mean, and you and I were talking about it tonight, I think it's important that everybody's around the table when that discussion happens.
Sure, mhm. What date will it be? November twentieth, that meeting.
Okay.
So we'll have, yeah.
Yeah, so to be fair, Mike and Steve aren't here tonight, and I won't be here at the next meeting, so we're trying to make it so that, a meeting that everyone is planning on attending.
Yeah, and there's no, it's, at this point, it's not an urgent discussion.
It's not, it's not a rush, yeah.
Yeah, we can still do it. Okay, anything else for the good of the order?
Uh Kathy, I have one quick question, and this may, might be something that we just talk about later.
Mm-hmm.
And it's about um how this committee, short of the newspaper or being here and reporting out.
Mm-hmm.
How do we message beyond the minutes, or might we wanna consider ways to message to our communities beyond the minutes and the um television recording?
I would, I would wanna have um M A S C come and do a presentation for us on that. Um it was one of the topics at the um workshop I attended on um the role of the chair. And it is a um it's, it can be fraught with issues. Typically, the minutes are the official um um record of the meeting. Um and our, our meetings are videoed, so people can look at the recording. And um I I I'd wanna know more about what um you mean by message. Um I think, and maybe as we get into um budget season, um I mean, it's, you know, it's it's eight-thirty, I can't get into a discussion now. But um I would wanna hear from M A S C and and get some of their thinking on that. Some school committees have a Facebook page. Um whoever does it is the official voice of the committee, but we've, we've sort of talked about that in the past. It it can be a slippery slope. So the official um communication are our minutes and our videos, so. Um and I don't know about advocating a point of view, I mean, I know that, I don't know that that is, I don't know. I, so that's why I would have M A S C.
I think, I think you might wanna bring that up when we do our legal workshop too.
That's a, yeah, good point, on the fore. But I'll also see what M A S C has for us on that. I know they were working on something about social media.
Okay. I think Hudson does a newsletter that they send out that seems to be pretty popular with the community.
From the school committee?
Yeah.
And who does it? Not the chair. Okay, no, no, I think it's.
There's something arguing about.
But it's come up before. But thank you for bringing it up. Okay, um let me read it in my own, I start with you, bud.
Yeah.
Okay, um I think we may be ready to entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Super. Make sure you've signed the warrants, please.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
I'm just gonna need a slide tonight, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll go to you now.